All right, welcome everybody to this city council regular meeting for Monday, February the 28th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. We're calling this meeting to order. If you would, please rise and join me and a couple of our youth and government folks right down here. We have the pleasure tonight to have youth and government from Dawson High School here. We'll talk about them here in just a few minutes, but they're going to help lead in our pledges. I'm going to lead us in a prayer tonight and then turn it over to them for our presentation of our flags. You would bow with me. Heavenly Father, we just come and ask that you take, that we take a few minutes out of a busy schedule and on the front end of this meeting to ask you to be a part of our meeting, to come and be with us, be as we deliberate tonight. Father, be with each member of this council, each member of the public as they travel to and from this place tonight. Father, we would, we, we ask for peace in Ukraine tonight. We ask, Father, that you just put a protective hedge around that country. Father, the aggression that they have faced and, Father, all the questions and answers yet to be said and answered along the way, but, Father, we'll learn more and more in the days and weeks and months to come. But, Father, protect the people in Ukraine tonight. Protect our own troops who may be assisting at some point in time in this conflict. Father, it's a reminder that freedom can be fleeting. And so we ask you, Father, to protect our own freedoms right here. We ask you to protect our own first responders that are on the streets and in our neighborhoods protecting us even now. Father, for men and women across this globe that protect our country, be with them, protect them. Bless their lives, bless their families, bless their hands and their hearts for what they do. Father, again, be with our meeting tonight as we deliberate the business of this great city, for which in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for God.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank these young, young gentlemen for that. All right, next up, as we move forward in our agenda, roll call and certification of a quorum. I will certify. We have a quorum present. Two members, all members are present with the exception of council member Kamkar and council member Perez. It's my understanding, council member Perez will be absent from the chamber, the, the whole meeting tonight. Mr. Kamkar should be here probably in about 30 or 45 minutes, just running late. With that, we'll move. Before we do, I would like to recognize a guest in our presence tonight, Mr. Trey Fletcher. Where's Trey? Right back here. Trey is an assistant city manager, deputy city manager in the city of Flugerville. Is here on a kind of a city managers exchange program. He comes in for a week and kind of shadows our folks here, learning about what we're doing here. And some of our folks will be doing the same over time. So we welcome Trey. Thank you for being in Pearland tonight. So with that, we'll move to citizens comments. Mayor Protim, what you got there?
Thank you, Mayor. We have three general comments this evening. First up, we've got Aruna Mutapilai, who's going to speak on behalf of an organization called Project Utrification Evasion. So let's put up five minutes for her. Please state your name and address for the purpose of the record, and we'll have a timer up there for your convenience. Appreciate you being here tonight.
Good evening. My name is Aruna Mutapilai, and I preside at 3526 Mira Glenn Drive, Pearland, Texas 77584. It is a privilege and pleasure to speak with you all today on the behalf of Project Utrification Evasion, a high school community service project. The focus of our project, utrification. So what is it and how can we stop it? Utrification can be defined as the process by which an entire body of water or parts of it becomes progressively enriched with minerals and nutrients, particularly nitrogen and phosphorus. Although this may sound complicated, you've likely come into contact with the effects of utrification in the past. Walking alongside almost all bodies of water in Pearland, the unsightly visage of blooming algae is unmistakable. Once beautiful parts of Pearland such as Mary's Creek have become eyesores to the residents of the area, and overblooming algae makes even the simplest recreational activities such as fishing, strolling, or golfing unpleasant at best. However, the problems associated with utrification extend beyond recreational activities. Under the surface, excess algae in rivers and lakes deprives aquatic organisms such as fish from crucial oxygen, leaving them to die along riverbanks. It's time that the city of Pearland take accountability for this problem. Although a team of 12 has cleaned over 100 pounds of algae from bodies of water in Pearland, we need your help as well. Since excess fertilizer runoff is the primary cause of utrification, it is imperative that the city reduce artificial fertilizer usage along roads and especially in golf courses. Made from organic materials, all natural fertilizers, specifically granular ones, are a useful alternative to synthetic fertilizers. Furthermore, the city of Pearland would benefit from planting more grass and greener, greenery along road sides to prevent pollutant runoff. More importantly, we need to work together to inform the residents of Pearland about the dangers of over fertilizing their lawns and gardens. Of course, the recommendations above are not all inclusive. However, we sincerely hope that the city of Pearland mobilizes its extensive resource network to mitigate the troubling issue at hand. The citizens of Pearland deserve to enjoy the natural beauty of this historic city. Without action soon, the problems caused by utrification will only become more permanent. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, Josh, get the timer?
Yes, council member. The one we usually use is not pulling up right now. So let me see if I can get one up for here for you. Sorry about that.
Okay, or for our subsequent speakers, I'll go ahead and give you a 30 second warning if we don't have it up there. Next, Mayor, we've got Lucy Garing. If you could please make your way to the podium. State your name and address for the purpose of the record and got three minutes. Thank you so much for joining us this evening.
My name is Lucy Garing, and I live at 1129 Stone Road, Pearland, Texas 77581. I just want to make a comment this morning because I'm always riding around in the car, and I noticed that and I noticed that we have finally in Pearland begun to have roads that link the east and the west side of Pearland. And what has bothered me is that we have to do that. I'm, I'm a fast driver. What can I say? All the police can watch me. We have these roads that are 30 miles an hour, which is not necessary in a road where you're having a group of people trying to get from one side to the other. And I think that if we were to consider going 40 or 45 on those roads, it would be more effective for the traffic. And I just wanted to throw that out. I've been thinking about it for a long time and wanted to see how you felt about it and, and your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next, Mayor, we have our last speaker for general comments, Mr. Jimmy Davis. If you would, please make your way to the podium. State your name and address for the purpose of the record, and thank you so much for being here. We've got that three minute timer up there for your convenience.
Jimmy Davis, 5004 Combson Street, Pearland 77584. Gentlemen, in your hands are three pieces of paper. This is all data published by the City of Pearland Utility Billing and IT. As you will see on the first page, this fiscal year for cycle 11, their meters are going to be read 11 times, but only 10 of the reads are going to be assessed monthly fees. This is because the July and August reads are both scheduled to be billed in August, and as a result, the August 10 meter read will be assessed no monthly fees. For this fiscal year, the biggest cycle in the city is slated to only pay 10 monthly fees because of 3230. This represents more than a $2 million loss, which is almost 4% of the budgeted revenue for the enterprise fund. Half of that is already lost, but the other half is avoidable if you act now. The second page is the meter read and billing schedule for cycle 12. If you look at the due date column, this calendar year of 12 months, we will pay 13 bills with 13 monthly charges. This is again because of 3230. Meanwhile, our friends east of the tracks will pay less for the same services. By moving away from 3230, you can avoid this inequitable burden being placed on us. Cycles 13 and 14 will pay 12 bills with 12 monthly fees, which is what they should, but they're still paying more than cycle 11. The third page is from the city's utility billing dashboard. It is the average daily, daily water billing for residential customers for each cycle based on the most recent month available. The days behind or how many extra days there would be billed if the city of Pearland moved away from 3230 using the next meter reads after what staff recommended last month. This is a month later, so it would push the meter reads to the next ones, which are May and June. On that third page also included what the average daily billing was for last June, so you can see a comparison of what to expect. The average is an extra $40.78 that we'll have to pay. We're going to pay that money anyhow, so the city would allow anyone that can't pay it to go on a payment plan until they're scheduled to be fully caught up. Some of you have expressed concern of people getting a bill they can't afford, and I appreciate that concern. I submit that a payment plan would be a good option and would be available to any. I think most people will pay a little extra and be glad to be caught up. People are paying it anyhow. It's just a matter of now versus later. By moving away from 3230, some people get a high bill and have a question. Most of the consumption will be available via meter profile. You can help restore confidence and rebuild trust. I can't make you do what the people want, but voters are watching. Don't cost us another million dollars. Don't make this drag out another year. Don't make some citizens pay more for the exact same services. Pull the trigger and let's operate within AWWA standards by June. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mayor, that concludes all of our general comments for the evening.
All right, we do have some that have signed up for comments on a specific item. So if you listed a specific item, we'll get to that when we get to those items. Moving forward into new business, I do want to welcome and recognize the students participating in the, in the YMCA Texas Youth and Government Program at Dawson High School. Had the privilege to, to go to one of their fundraising kind of breakfast here, I guess, two months ago with the chamber. The chamber is a big supporter of that, that program as well, and really got to see some, some dynamic speakers and, and really great young folks and what they're doing. And what they learn in youth and government is, is really a lot about state and federal government. And city manager was there with me, and, and we were like, wait a minute. You know, you get up, you turn the water on, you flush the coiled, you know, those types of things, drive the roads. This is local government that affects you day in and day out, and we ought to, you know, help and shape and form and at least educate on local government. And so had an opportunity for them to, to come in today. We've been meeting with them, going through the different branches of government from legal to the policymaking, as well as the city management side today, and, and hopefully we can kind of grow more into that program over time. Hopefully, they've enjoyed it. They all had dinner right before coming back downstairs, so hopefully they enjoyed that as well. Clay, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I think appreciate and glad they came, and they were very attentive and been here since 4:30. So give them credit for that, and hopefully they'll all be city managers or city council members down the road, so.
Sounds good, but we appreciate them being here tonight. With that, we'll move forward in our public hearing number one. If we would, if staff would read the purpose of the public hearing into the record and then go right into your staff report.
So public hearing on a request by Candace McGuire, applicant on behalf of Julian Davis, representing Fellowship of Believers Baptist Church owner, for approval of conditional use permit for the expansion of a church on approximately three acres of land within the Neighborhood Services District generally located at 2834 Wagon Trail Road, Pearland. They have asked for a conditional use per, permit, which is a requirement for expansion of a church on existing three acre site. The site in question is here. This is a zoning, an aerial map showing Neighborhood Services as the current zoning. Neighboring properties, majority residential with some commercial light industrial. This is a view of the subject property from the street wagon trail. This is a view from a days, adjacent properties. This is the proposed site plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a meeting on February 7th, conducted a public hearing on the request. All seven members present at the meeting say that they supported and would approve the request. That's it, sir.
That completes your staff report?
Yes, sir.
All right, is the applicant present? All right, do you have a presentation or does their presentation suffice? Or you're certainly, if you have a presentation, you can, you can share with us. Okay. Okay. If we have any questions, we may have you go to the podium at that point. Okay. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for your application. Moving forward in our public hearing, we'll have opportunity for those wish, wishing to speak for or against this proposed permit. I can go to the podium, give your name and address, three minutes. Second request for those wishing to speak in favor or against this proposed application. And third and final time, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request, and do so. Seeing no one moving in that direction, we'll turn it over to city council for questions, comments, concerns. Mr. Owens?
All right, okay, there, there it is. It's coming on. No, I, I don't have anything other than the fact, I think it's a good use of the land out there. And I said, when I first came up here 17 years old, I mean, 17 years ago, that I would never stand in the way of the Lord planting another church. And so that's, that's my comment on it.
Yeah, I just quick question, and this is maybe staff or someone on council. Understand the CUP process and some of the business that we want to keep out of Pearland or limit the number of them, liquor stores, massage parlors and those things. But why in the heck do we have churches on there?
I would say this, this speaks to the certain, the type of, the size of a church may impact neighborhood adjacent uses or traffic patterns. It just gives us an extra ability to review it. But again, it's, it's one of the things on the list, and so we, we take everybody through the process.
Isn't that more of a zoning issue?
Yeah, I can, I'll, I'll add a little bit to that. Churches are allowed, for example, I think in a residential area, and by, not by right, but by CUP. And so it, it's more about adjacency and what happens and how it interfaces in those particular areas. It's the reason why I think the CUP was required. I agree with you. If it's in a, a business type setting, why is a CUP required?
Or an existing church. All right, thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions, comments?
Other than that, I fully support it.
Seeing none, we'll close this documented public hearing on the CUP, and we'll move to new business item number two. Councilmember Orlando, would you present that, please?
Consideration and Possible Action Resolution Number R 2022-CUP 2022-00001. So moved.
All right, motion and a second. We've had staff report and councilmembers opportunity to speak. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little? Member Owens?
Aye.
Mayor, if I could, just to clarify, it was Resolution R 2022-CUP 22-00001. I think there was a misread, but just for the purpose of the record. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries. Five to zero.
I just wanted to make sure you got all the zeros in there. Very good. All right, moving forward in our agenda, consent agenda, any items to be removed? No one's brought anything to me. Seeing none. Mr. Carbone, would you place the consent agenda on the table, items A through, I believe it's I?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration, possible action, approval of consent agenda, items A through I. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero for consent agenda items A through I.
All right, as we said, that early part of the agenda was going to go quick. Kind of gave them a heads up on what to expect. All right, now we're, new business continued. Item number three, I'm just going to place it up here. This is a discussion, so council discussion draft of the short term rental ordinance, and I believe we have one member of the public to speak.
Yes, sir, Mayor. We do have a member of the distinguished public here who would like to say some things. Mr. Joseph Coza, if you would, please make your way to the podium. State your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you very much for being here.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Coza. My address is 2403 Green T Drive. Approximately June to July of 2019, myself and several of the community from Verona Drive started a committee, if you want to call it that, in regards to a home that's an STR that started out as an Airbnb that turned into a party house. As well as many of council and the mayor knows, this home didn't start out that way. It started out as a simple Airbnb and evolved into a party house. Tonight, we have this work from a committee of the neighborhood, the council, that has come together with recommendations. I hope that we can take a look and sensibly come up with a regulation ordinance that can help in controlling this type activity. The STR taxation, hot tax, took several meetings, quite, quite a few more than what I thought would take to be able to get something like that done. I am also a business owner in here in Pearland, and I'm required to pay sales tax and be regulated. But for some reason, several members on this council had issues with taxes being paid that are required by the state and required by city ordinance. They also don't want to regulate them because they said it in previous meetings, it was surveillance. Tonight, there will also be some issues taken up with surveillance in the city from cameras being placed. And I'd kind of like to know what Member Orlando's position is on surveillance of all the citizens that drive through the city, as well as when he was discussing surveillance of STR owners. That's my comments. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. That concludes our speakers, Mayor.
All right, as we move forward on this, so your agenda, and this is a little housekeeping with, with the council. So as we discussed the last time we had this on, these were kind of the, the four areas that we wanted to come back and have a little bit more direction to. The rest of the ordinance, it seemed to be pretty simple, the body of the ordinance. So what I'm asking for from council is, let's discuss item A, get our thoughts on it so we can give direction to legal, then we'll discuss item B. That way, we have very good clarity to, to the, to the city attorney, then to C, then to D, and then he'll have direction then. And this, this ordinance, it wouldn't be slated to come back to us because we have a meeting next Monday. It'd be March 31, or March 21, before we would then vote on it. So that gives him the opportunity to do any cleanup with the alternatives. And so like, number one, we have permit application. The committee recommended something, and then there was alternative. So, Mr. Coker, do you want to like discuss just the two, and then we can kind of give you our thoughts on it?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I, I did want to just mention that this evening, I see Mr. John Lamson, who was a member of the committee that's in the audience this evening. So obviously, if we need any clarity from the committee's perspective, I know that he's here. I did not see the other members of the committee. There were obviously council members on the committee, and then there were members of staff that participated. Mr. Eisenberg, who's on our P and Z, and then Manny Patel, who's a local hotel, teller, also participated. So if you recall after our last workshop, the intention was to, to present to council the findings, and then, of course, council directed me to go ahead and, and start working on the ordinance. I felt like there was some clarity on some issues, and hopefully that's reflected to some extent in the draft that councils received a few weeks ago. What I would like to do, as, as you indicated, is this evening, in those areas where there may not be clarity or where their council may have some disagreement, let's try to, you know, focus on those. Obviously, it's, it's the council, I mean, it's the, the ordinance that the council's considering, and so obviously, it's all fair game. But I highlighted the areas that I thought where I wasn't sure exactly, and didn't have enough clarity to go ahead and put into the terms of the ordinance, what was discussed that night. So hopefully, this evening, we can reach that point. And I do think it'd be good if we could just break it down sort of by these four sections. And so just sort of starting with the permit application, I think that was one of the recommendations, the committee, that we do have a permit application process, and then sort of walk through that. And then once we get some clarity on any of those issues, then we can move to the next items.
Right, and the committee did state, you know, site plans slash survey of the property showing the number of bedrooms that will be used for short term rental occupancy and those types of things. And then the alternative, instead of having an actual site plan of the house, would be, you know, to provide the number of bedrooms that will be used for short term rental occupancy in the application, on the application, which can be verified during the initial inspection. So just really on the paperwork, here, we're going to have three bedrooms available, X number of people. This helps establish an occupancy. So two different recommendations. The, the committee went ahead and recommended one, but they discussed both of these during the, during the meeting. So I'll ask council for what your thoughts are on A.
Yep, I, on this first one, I, there was a lot of discussion first time we saw this about privacy and with the site plan. So I do like the alternative and support that.
Any other thoughts, council? So permit application A, and like, there's a...
Are we able to pull up the options on the screen?
Yeah, that would be good. Gosh, if you could do page four of 11 in the, in the write-up or in the, in the ordinance?
On number four, under permit application, I think you won't insert the word On number four, under permit application, I think you want to insert the word two between prior and renting. Let me see.
I'm sorry, councilmember. What, what, where are you at?
On number four, under the permit application, permit holder, comma, prior.
Oh, renting to a short term. Yeah. And, and just to clarify, there, make sure council knows, I have a draft. Because there's a lot of cleanup I still have to do on, on some things like that. But thank you for pointing that out, councilmember. And there are a few more, as I was going through today, I was already making note of.
Roll back down, page four, there.
D, right there.
Thank you, councilmember Orlando. Yeah. So the, the, the STR committee recommended what's in C, and then here's an alternative that could be used. And so just trying to get direction on which one of these two the council would like to see put in.
I, I'm cool with just doing the number of bedrooms that are going to be used. Yeah, the alternative. I think the other option there is maybe a little, little much. And then is there some way that we can maybe, I, I get that we've got, you know, different needs for understanding who the owner is versus who the agent is. But it seems like we've got that kind of delineated a lot in here. So is there some way maybe we can just kind of clean that up?
Well, there are actually three different people. There's a owner, operator, and agent, and they can be different people. And so that's why we have them defined in the definitions section.
Got it.
So keep in mind, an owner may not necessarily be operating the, the short term rental. And then the agent is technically the person who would be the 24-hour contact.
I guess they're hiring a, maybe a third party? Is that what you're saying?
That's, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And then again, the agent's a 24-hour contact. And it is possible that the, it could be all three are the same person, but it's, it is possible that they may not be.
Okay. Then I would also be okay with maybe when the permit is initially issued, that maybe we give them a, a two-year initial permit time. And they would just do some type of a check-in, maybe after the first year, kind of like, you know, with car registration, something like that. I mean...
You get the two years on the brand new vehicle.
Right. Yeah.
Type of thing.
Right. Because I mean, if they're going to go through all of the initial things of going through the processes, and if we have the inspections and stuff like that, I feel like, you know, a one-time thing for them, I would, you know, not to make too many assumptions, but you know, if homeowners just renting it out a couple of times, they're going to go through all of those things in the very beginning. I think it would be, you know, worthwhile maybe to have a, a two-year initial permit. Not to make them do too, too much, because I don't think they're, you know, too many active, high-frequency STRs here in the city. And then I'm also good with the alternative for number five as well, just to put the, the link on the city's website and just have that available to the public. If people know that that's there and they needed to just go on there and peruse, they can see where, you know, all the different STRs are. It just makes it easier than having to be responsible for sending out a bunch of letters all the time within a timeframe, things like that. What I got for A.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah. Any of this stuff that we're putting together for these now, does that any cast any liability on the city when we approve it?
No, it, it does not. This is a governmental function as far as, it's just like any other permitting process. And so it, as far as if something happens at a short term rental, the city would be immune from liability.
So I guess one of the things that, you know, this kind of goes against our hoteliers here in the city and for people doing this. Do we have some of the same regulations about if they have a swimming pool, that the swimming pool area has a fence around it gated or what have you?
So that was an issue. We actually had a, filled in a phone call. That was actually discussed as, as part of the committee as well. And we do have separate regulations with respect to, for instance, maintenance of a pool. I know that there was a situation where a pool became neglected, and the water, of course, became very, very dirty and imposed a health hazard in that regard. But that was handled separately through different ordinance by our Public Works Department. And so they, they handled that. As far as, what was the other part of that question with respect to, oh, as far as the, the fencing around the pool? Again, they're going to have to follow our codes with respect to a pool.
I know the one we had in Green Tea, and I think that one, on the time that I went over there, a couple of the people were coming out drunk anyway from there. But it's like a big party over there, and they were up and down the whole roadway and back on to Green Tea. So it went over, you know, two and a half blocks over there and, and blocking down everything. There, people couldn't even get out of the driveway. And some of the people that live there didn't want their grandkids going outside in the front yard because of the activity that was going on to that other place down there. It, it really causes a problem, I think, for, you know, residential and, and HOAs, which we have no way to stop it as, as a HOA to do that. But, you know, it's the, the one that I'm familiar with and one that I've seen, it, it was just a, a real pain for everybody that lived in that, that particular area for that. And I just want to make sure that when this goes into effect, that there's things in it that we can stop, like we had over there off of Green Tea, that one that we had over there, and stopping some of that, you know, and I think the limiting number of people and how long.
Yeah, I think the occupancy will help. I think the occupancy will help. And then we'll get to D, which is permit denial or revocation. I think there is a, there is a point where if there's a problem child, we have the opportunity to revoke their permit and, and those types of things. So we'll talk about that. Do you have a preference on permit application, whether it's as recommended with the site plan or just the number of rooms? And then, or sending out the notice of 200 feet, you know, when one is approved or just having it on the website? You have?
Yeah. I think the notice is a good deal to, to put it in, you know, there in that area, you know, for the residential and make sure that they know and understand in how long that they're going to be renting the facility, you know, there if we can do that. Are we tracking this on, anyway, on, on the tax that they pay for this?
Yeah, that, that obviously is, is a separate piece. But yes, we'll have the opportunity to track it as well.
Yeah, I'll go. Darren, I appreciate that you condensed this down on some of the areas of, of discussion for us. I just wanted to confirm, though, I, I think you and I had had a conversation, and I, I reviewed each of the individual provisions of the entire ordinance. And I think in the permitting category, there were 11. So is this the opportunity to discuss any of those provisions, not just the one you kind of honed in on, right?
Exactly. Yeah. Obviously, these were the ones that we were sort of focusing in on. But I, I, obviously, it's before council night, and I'd like to get any feedback y'all have on any other portion as well.
Awesome. Yeah. So I, I like this format of dividing it up into categories. It's, it's similar to, like I said, what I did with Darren. And so I will, I will do that. I just wanted to upfront, give a quick overview of, of my more overarching philosophy, that just kind of like a yardstick for each of these. And so I, I, I think what it comes down to for me is, I think everyone is aware there are fewer people, if there are few people who are stronger advocates for shutting down bad actors all across Pearland than I am in, in a lot of different regards. In fact, literally last week, a, a place that I reported was shut down that was running an unsafe and illegal short term rental. It was actually the same owner, the guy who lives at Verona. And of course, there's all the other illegal and unsavory businesses that, that we've discussed up here. But with that in mind, the bright line that I kind of used as I went through each of these provisions, and as I'm looking at it, I mean, there's at least 34, and I know I collapsed a, a lot of those. But the bright line that I use is, what are we trying to do here? Are we trying to empower the city to shut down those bad actors as quickly and as forcible, forcefully as possible? Or are we trying to make it so hard for the average homeowner to operate an STR that we effectively ban STRs? And of course, STRs, regardless of what anyone thinks of them, the Texas Supreme Court ruled that that is a legitimate use for folks to, to do even in a residential area, and that that's a legitimate thing that you're allowed to do as a private property owner, and you have the, the right to do that with your property. So that's kind of the yardstick that I use for each of these. And that kind of makes it a lot easier for me to assess, you know, which of these are targeted towards making it as easy as possible to shut down these, these people who are jerks or horrible neighbors who have these parties, and which ones are, are not really driving towards that. And so on the permitting category, I, I think the annual, the annual permit is, to remember Hernandez's point, I think that's superfluous. Also, when we went through talking about the fees, and we, we... Sorry, I said, I said fees. But when we went through and talked about the, the registration requirement, we said, oh, there's not a fee, maybe we'll add one later. But the, I think idea was, we're going to generate, now that we have this registration and we have this whole regime, we're going to be able to tax these things. And so that, that should pay for itself. So I, I would be, would lean towards the side of, you don't have to do this annually, and we would have a low or non-existent fee, and we're going to collect our money to, to pay for the additional cost of this through the additional hot revenue that's collected. I'm looking at this, I, I, most of this, I think, was good in terms of like, what helps us shut down party houses, having the name, address, contact information of the property owner. I think it's good. Knowing each of the people that are kind of involved, I think that's good. The 24-hour emergency contact, I think that's good. There was one issue, though, that just said they have to reply within an hour. I just said, I don't think that should be grounds for, when we get later into the revoking a, a permit, I think if someone isn't, doesn't hear their phone at 3:00 in the morning, they, we shouldn't say, oh, you're, you're out of compliance because of that. But overall, I think it's a, a good policy in terms of actually doing something about nuisances to, to have a 24-hour emergency contact. Absolutely. I think all that's good. I, I would tend towards the second option, obviously. I, I don't think asking people to submit floor plans to their house and just, I'm sure we can, we can get a little more in this. But having a camera at the front of a neighborhood that scans license plates for, for rapists and murderers is a little bit different than turning over a floor plan of your home that's now a publicly available document that anyone can go and pull at any given time. And so to me, that's extremely invasive. And so, yeah, I, I would definitely lean more towards the option of a, a number of room thing. But overall, I think there's a, a lot of good provisions in this. And I, I think we're moving in the, the right direction. But yeah, I, I think just the, the site plan thing, I think, what option, alternative option. The, provide a link on its web. Yeah, I, I, I think this is the, I think this is initially, we, and we talked about, do we want to have a sign in the yard? Do we want to do the notification? Again, I, I think the notification isn't necessary. I think if you have someone doing the right thing, and literally no one even knows there's an issue, it, it could just cause problems versus if you start noticing, oh, there's parties at this house, and you go and check, and now, now you know, and now it's available, and you know who to call. So again, on this one, I tend to think the alternative one works towards what we're trying to accomplish up here.
Comments on, I guess, what we're trying to accomplish? And I'll just, I'll kind of state it from my perspective. It, it's to strike that balance of having a decent regulation so we keep peace in a neighborhood, but at the same time, not so onerous that a person can't, you know, use their house for some, some additional income in a, in the right way.
For sure.
And then, and then, but how we do that, and I'll tell you, whatever we come up with and pass, you know, we'll be back six months to a year later making some changes because we missed something, or we need to change something up. So any other, Darren, you got something?
I just want to clarify. So it looks like we're, at least on the permit application portion, we're, we're sort of winding down on that discussion. I just wanted to clarify. I know councilmember Hernandez indicated that, you know, he'd prefer that the permit be for two years, that it not just be a one-year permit. And councilmember Orlando, I understand you alluded to that as well. It, I wanted to just clarify from council, do you want it to be a two-year permit that would have to be renewed, or something different than that?
I think a two-year permit, just with that, with the two-year renewals.
I mean, we're going to know about the bad actors sooner rather than later.
Agreed.
Right?
When we get later, if there is a bad actor, we can pull the permit
Right.
Prior to the two years expiring.
Very good.
So you have good, do you have good, do you have good direction?
I think I have, I have good direction on the permitting application, yes.
Okay. So let's move to B, inspection required. Kind of the same thing. Let's kind of keep it focused on that area, and that way we can finish this up. Any other questions, comments? That's on page six. Renewal inspection, each permit, short term rental shall have a renewal inspection conducted prior to the issuance of each renewal permit. The alternative, each owner shall annually certify in writing that the property is in compliance with the initial permit occupancy standards of this subsection prior to the issuance of each renewal. So one of those two alternatives. Was there another one in this section?
Yes, it's, it's going to be in section C. That's more for the renewal inspection. And just so, so you'll understand, if we went to two years, then the, every two years, with the recommendation of the committee, it would be an inspection every two years. The alternative there that you can see is, is more of a renewal certification. And it would be the STR owner certifying to the city that, that's just assuming, assuming it's a property that has been in compliance. And they certify that, and then we can verify, then they wouldn't necessarily have to, they could get the permit renewed, but they wouldn't necessarily have to pay a renewal fee.
Yeah, I agree. I like the alternative. If there, if there been a, if they've been a good actor, no violations, then a self-certification's fine with me.
And, and to follow up on that, the section D of the inspections, additional inspection authorized. And that basically says the city made its sole discretion perform additional inspections of a permitted short term rental when a violation or violations of this article is reported or suspected. And so that provides that opportunity if there is somebody who's a potential bad actor out there to do follow-up inspections.
So we're not waiting for two years to point out a bad actor. When we get something reported and we're, and we're investigating, we're on top of it sooner rather than later.
Correct.
I have a question on, so I, I agree with Member Carbone. I think the alternative is good under C. Also, I had a question on the initial inspection, item number four there. Bedrooms have two means of escape. Can somebody in code enforcement just tell me what that would mean? Like, if you're on a second story, does that require some type of ladder or something, or?
It, councilmember, just mean a simple bedroom door going out into a hallway and then a window. You couldn't have just a doorway and door room.
Okay. But if the window, I guess, just going out to a roof is sufficient that we wouldn't require any type of...
And the window needs to be operable. You have to be able, be able to open the window.
Okay. I was just kind of curious.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chief Riley, but that, that's a, a requirement of the life safety code, correct?
Yes.
So that's, that's a requirement that's inside the residential building code already for bedrooms. And I think what it's meant to address is somebody trying to convert, say, a really big closet into another bedroom to have it as an income stream. We, we've seen that, and people have that in their homes now. But we're not going to let that type of home be rented out as a short term rental.
Got it. Or media rooms are also frequently used in that manner. Not necessarily here in town. I'm just saying, buy, buy short term rentals. They'll put a bunch of bunk beds in them.
That, that's clear. Yeah. Again, just to reiterate, I think the self-certification's fine. I've got no issues with that. And I'm good. That's all, Mayor. Remember Little?
Yeah. Paragraph B here, reinspection deficiencies. Above that, they talk about the initial inspections and the things that need to be in the home. But if they don't pass inspection, what kind of process we're going to have for a second inspection or a reinspection? It titled reinspection, but it doesn't say anything other than it won't be issued unless it passes inspection. We're going to...
So, so...
Is the inspection by the fire department, is that included in their permit fee?
Correct. That, that's the, 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 this would be based on the fact that, yes, we'll have to determine separately what the fee would be for this permit and, and amend our fee ordinance. But that would include the inspection. And then if the council wants to, and let's just say, you know, they passed one, two, three, but, you know, or they failed one or two of these items, they could not operate that STR until they had a reinspection. So they would be responsible for reaching back out to the city, say, okay, I fixed what I did. I need to re-inspect. And then the council would have to determine if the count, if you would want to charge a re-inspect fee. And that would be part of that fee ordinance when we get to that point.
Do we want to put language in there that it would be the applicants? Do we want to put language in there that it would be the applicant's responsibility, once the deficiencies are corrected, to reach back out to the city to have another inspection?
Can do that, that'd be good.
Any other questions, comments? Darren, do you have some direction on this? Oh, Member Orlando?
I'm just trying to see what's in this category. My general comments were, my general comments here are just kind of, and I don't think I'll carry the day on this, but it just seems like really arbitrary, the two adults per bedroom room, and the maximum occupancies. I mean, we're making one rule for like, any variety of different houses. That's the next?
Yeah, that's the next section. We haven't gotten there yet. So we're just, we're, right now, we're just talking about the inspection part.
My, my categories are slightly different. Okay, then I, then I think I'm good with the alternative on this. Yeah.
Mayor, I did have a question that was asked, that I, I don't know that it's super relevant for this process, but maybe I just want to get the question out there so staff can consider it for future discussion. But at what point do you think we are going to potentially have to hire additional code enforcement to, if we got to 50 registrants, 100, 250, do we have any idea what that would look like?
If John wants to venture, I guess, I mean, until it's on the ground and working, you know, it'd be hard, but.
No, I would agree. I think part of the whole issue of originally of going with this program is identifying how many STRs we have in Pearland, and that would allow us to kind of forecast what we need. Conceptually, we've thought about this as a duty that could be partnered with a new code officer position that would also handle CUP inspections and follow-ups, as well as some other zoning issues that we feel need to be focused on more. But specifically on STRs, I think it's too early in the process to understand exactly what we're looking at from a staffing perspective.
If I could interject and just put a plug in, correct me if I'm wrong, John, but we've talked about, there's been interest in putting more regimented CUP follow-ups and so forth. And so there might be a package of budget time that would say, we have inspector that could do that, and perhaps this STR work as well, so.
Is it possible for us to contract with an outside group, have that be, that contract be paid out of the people applying, as opposed to hiring another person? Is that possible?
That's actually a question I brought up in the, in the committee, was, in the, I guess the question is, is there a, is there an actual group that would do these, these types of inspections?
Yes. I don't think we're estimating this is in the thousands. This might be in the low hundreds. And just having an extra person, these things have a way of growing. And wouldn't it be easier to have a per hour?
So we're getting the cart before the horse. Obviously, I mean, the question was asked about what the breaking point was. I mean, I'm just trying to share that there's other things that have been expressed in, in terms of inspections. And obviously, if there's, you know, 20 of these or 100 of these, we have to see what that would mean. And that would make a lot easier to sub that out and contract that. But if we want to package it with some other things that have been expressed, then it would make sense to look at a person. But again, that's down the road.
So on the inspections, one of the, when we kind of tried to look at what would be inspected, what would be required, we turned to our marshal's office, and our code enforcement office to see kind of a starting point. This was with the committee. And so, you know, currently, those offices have to inspect every foster care home. If you've got one child or, or four in the home, they have to be inspected annually. So we kind of took a page out of what they do there. What do you inspect? And aired that down to something more relevant for this. But then ask them the question, you're inspecting these every year, what's your timeframe, and how many do we have? And John, you were part of those meetings. I want to say we had like 95 foster care homes in town, somewhere in that ballpark, right around 100, which is very similar to the number of what we're seeing in the STRs. And I believe their inspections take anywhere from, on normal, 15 to 30 minutes. Every once in a while, they have ones a little bit longer, but on the normal case, 15 to 30 minutes. And so from that, we can kind of gauge what this would be. And if we're going to do them every two years, not annually, if they're on a rotating basis, then clearly, the numbers are pretty, pretty small.
Mayor, any additional cost to the city to monitor these short-term rentals, I think should be passed through to the applicants in the determining how much the permit costs, whether it's done by contractor, whether it's done in-house.
And that was, that was what was determined by the, that was what was determined by the committee, was, you know, we've got to establish what that cost is, that eventually will be what the fee kind of is to go with, so.
Seems like to me on a short-term rental, what we're doing, we're laying on a business within a residential area. I mean, it is a business.
I'll, I'll say that the Texas Supreme Court is allowing businesses in a residential area.
Yes.
Let's be, let's be clear who's, who's allowing it.
And that's, you know, and that, that's actually is what's happening on this. I would like, you know, since a lot of this came up in concern with the hotels and what have you, losing business, we got an individual out there that owns a hotel. I'd like to have his input, if you don't mind. I'd like to have your input up there to be able to talk about this.
Woody, while he's going to the podium, what's your thoughts on inspection required, page five, to have, where'd it go? Excuse me, page? Page six, C, renewal inspections. The alternative, or what the committee recommended? Mr. Ruchi?
Thank you for having me today, Council Mayor Cole. My name is Ruchi Patel, 12213 Rosemont Lane, Pearland, Texas, 77584. Few months ago, I believe I was here speaking to you on behalf of STRs, and how they're impacting our community, not just our businesses. So you're asking from a business perspective, I will tell you, certainly, you know, I'm listening to you guys about drawings and, and all this stuff. And I'll tell you, most of the information is already online. All these homes that are being rented have their photos online. If you're worried about people being able to get this information, if you dig a little deep, everything's online. So if you're asking me about how I feel about STR, look, if you're going to make, I'm a resident, and I've been fortunate that I don't have any residents that rent their house to outsiders and create nuisance for me and my family. However, I have met the people in Green Tea who've had this issue. And it's impacting residents, and I think that's what you should be focused on. How do we make this a community where people chose to live, not to run a business in a residential community? And I think you guys keep losing the point in going back and forth on these issues that are very minor. Focus on the larger picture of what the residents want. And the businesses, from the business point of view, if you're asking me, we incur, just, I think last week, the fire marshal had stopped by one of our hotels, and he reminded us, we're behind on our fire inspection. Fair enough, we are. And if you're going to hold us to all these standards, and let the residents who are running businesses also be held to the same standard, I don't mind if they get a two-year permit, doesn't matter, we don't get it. But if you want to give it to them, fair enough. If they're going to turn a home, and it's an investment home, a lot of these homes are investment homes, they're not residential, they're not renting one room in their house while they're still there. They're buying these homes, running it as a business, and we're here debating whether it's going to impact them. It's not going to impact them. Because these houses are not being rented, majority of them are not, being rented for one bedroom. They're renting the entire home, which they have purchased for an investment purpose.
Mayor, can we put a provision in there that our preference would be to have an outside vendor do the inspections, as opposed to an employee? That'd be unreasonable.
Yeah, that would, obviously, he still has some cleanup to do. You missed the.
You wouldn't put that in the ordinance.
Normally, you wouldn't put something like that, or it's, that's administrative function that, I mean, the council can say, hey, we want to, you know, when we put it in the budget, we want to fund it this way instead of this way. But, yeah, you would normally put who's inspecting in the ordinance. They're required to get it inspected.
Absolutely, I just.
Darren, do you have?
With respect to inspections, what I, what I've heard, and I would just ask council to clarify if, if necessary, but what I did hear is that the, one, of course, we're going to be doing inspections, excuse me, applicant, the permit would be for two years, and that the renewal certification, it can be done by renewal. They certify in writing that they're in compliance, and then that could be renewed without an additional inspection. And so the, as a result, the cost for those individuals who are abiding by the rules, it would not, they would not be bearing an additional cost.
Okay. Let's move on to C, restrictions. Do you want to set the table on that one, Mr. Coker?
Sure. Just to clarify, as you'll see, there, there are several things in here. I'll just quickly go over the highlights. There was a provision about external signage not being allowed. I'm going to come back to, well, I'll just do it now. There's a limitation on occupancy. Essentially, the occupant would be two adults per bedroom that's permitted, and then an additional two adults, and then not to exceed 10. So if you had four adults, they could have up to six kids in there. But the total occupancy would not exceed 10. Then there's the parking provision. It says, shall provide off-street parking on the premises of the short-term rental to accommodate at least one motor vehicle per bedroom. And then anybody else parking, if, that would be in excess of that, would have to park in the public right of way, but they would have to ensure that they are not obstructing ingress and egress to neighboring properties. There are some requirements for advertising, what has to be included in the advertisements there. And then finally, there's a guest notification. And if I could just sort of set the table for this one specifically, and then, of course, all of them are fair game. But on this, the, the committee recommended a short-term rental, asked to provide notification, that there would be something that posted at the entrance, that would have certain information. For instance, the owner, the operated, the designated agent, a location of fire extinguishers, maximum permitted occupancy, description of the required off-street parking requirements, and then a written prohibition of the use of the property as a party slash entertainment venue, or any commercial, non-residential use that violates the zoning regulations. Discussing this with PD, and one of the things that PD thought that, as opposed to having them, that we prepare a notification that they would simply post, that we just require that they, this information be contained on their permit, and that they'd post their permit. And when PD shows up at, let's say there's a complaint, and they show up, and it's posted at a specific location at the entrance of the facility, once you go in, they can see, okay, this is a permitted facility. I know what the occupancy requirements are for this permit, and, and those types of things. That'll help them facilitating an investigation, you know, and knowing that it is actually permitted. And again, that was an alternative, and it's not a huge difference between the, the recommended language and that. It was just more of a, simply trying to simplify things by saying, hey, if the permit includes this information, then let's require the permit be posted at the property.
All right, we'll turn to, and I, Mr. Orlando, I know you had some questions about this one originally, so I'll start off with you. And I, and I don't necessarily disagree on the one-hour part, that might be, that might be difficult in some cases, but let you take it away.
Yeah, I appreciate that. First, the guest notification sheet, I think that's good, and especially as it relates to the comments around PD. I think what would make the most sense here for standardization is like, if the city just had a, probably a one-page, just printable template that had blank lines for contact info, the parking limits, whatever. And that kind of makes it less burdensome for the STRs, and easier for the police to identify as that form, instead of everyone kind of doing their own thing. No external signage, that's all good. I largely, I think this is a pretty good section. The part that I just chafed at a little bit is trying to put one rule in place for every single kind of house in the city, as it pertains to occupancy. There's just a lot of variety in, there's a lot of variety, and I've stayed in a lot of different hotel rooms, I've stayed in a lot of different short-term rentals around the country and around the world, and you can, they're all set up differently, and I just, I think it's an improper use of government to try to set just an arbitrary standard in place and try to hold everybody to that. So I'm not really in favor of that portion. But in terms of the, the signage, the guest notification sheet, the off-parking requirements, I think that's all good, and goes toward the issue of preventing neighborhood nuisances, rather than subjecting Airbnbs to as many business-like restrictions as possible, which that is what some people want to do, obviously.
If I could, just, just clarify one thing. The, with respect to the number on the occupancy, it was, it was a, an item that was discussed quite a bit with the committee, and I just want to make sure council understands, sort of how we got there. It goes back to what is the ultimate intent. And the intent is to try to create, or try to prevent situations from being created that could lend themselves to the potential of becoming a party, or something that, that could impact the neighborhood. And so it, I promise you, it surely was not an arbitrary number that came up with. They actually tried to, had a lot of discussion there, and said, well, if you think about it, if you have two adults per bedroom, and we're only permitting, you know, the number of bedrooms there would be, then we said, okay, well, then we'll add some additional, which would be two more adults, and then children, and then that, then the question was, okay, so what, how, what number do we not want to exceed to prevent somebody from really creating a situation that could have the potential to turn into a situation that would, would be adversarial to, to the neighborhood? And that's how we got there. I just want to make sure everybody understood that.
Sure, I could. I'm not renting to them. Darren, explain the one-hour part, because it's, it's, the agent once contacted by law enforcement or the city has, just has to show that they are attempting to contact the renter within one hour.
I could have come up with an alternative. Would y'all prefer going with 60 minutes instead, or? Okay, I see, all right, we can just, everybody's paying attention.
And attention.
No. Actually, you know, we, we looked at numerous cities and different ordinances. There were some that had one hour, there was another one I saw that had two. Some of them just said you had to contact, you didn't have a time period. And so I can't say that there was, I think everybody thought that the, the best thing to do is, what you're trying to do with this section is to say, you want to shift the responsibility. So let's say, and keep in mind, this is a situation where an officer is contacting the agent, or the 24-hour contact. And you're saying to that agent, okay, hey, we've got a call about an issue here. We understand that you are a permitted STR. We, the idea is to have the owner of the STR, or their agent, go out there and try to address the situation initially, as opposed to always having to have police respond out there. And that was one of the reasons to have these contacts. And so it's sort of trying to shift that responsibility. The question is whether or not it's one hour, two hours, or do you assign a time? That's something that obviously, it's at the discretion of the council. But that was a number we came up with, was the one hour.
Questions, comments on this section? Especially with the alternatives?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with the alternative that was presented. And I think the idea of having a standardized template is, is great as well. From a procedural perspective, just so I kind of know what to expect, with the information or the list that the city is maintaining, would those live on CVB's website, or would they live on city's website? Are we thinking about how to make that as easy to access as possible?
You know, Mayor, that I think we shouldn't make this as stringent as it can be. I mean, I've only been around one, and Joe can tell you, those are not the people you want in your neighborhood. Those are the ones you want out. I mean, the thing about it is, I mean, you know, and, and the people, they, they don't know, they advertise, has got it advertised for that, and there's not anybody there. The people come over there, they do whatever they want to do. The people come over there, they do whatever they want to do. And, you know, I'll be honest with you, when, when I was over there and was watching it, and the people coming out of it, you wouldn't even want those people in the neighborhood. And a guy had a leather belt, and he looked at me and walked up and popped the leather belt. And I'll tell you what I told him. I said, the next pop you hear won't be from a damn belt. Okay? And I mean, this is crazy. I mean, we're opening something there that we're not going to have any control over, because, you know, it's like that one over there. They advertise it on Facebook or wherever, and nobody's there. That's the responsibility of it. I don't know what we're going to do, but I mean, you know.
Well, and I'll let Darren answer the question that was posed, but at some, at some point, it's going to have to, cities all around the state are going to take this back to the legislature, take it to the legislators, and something's got to happen in certain neighborhoods. And I also want to say this, you know, on the record, not every short-term rental is like Verona. It's just not. And so we can't gauge every short-term rental by what happens at Verona. Verona is certainly an outlier. It certainly has been the impetus to, for us to do something, but it's not everyone. And so, you know, there are people who run short-term rentals, not only here, but all across the state and all across the country that don't do it, and they do it, they do it the right way. You would never know that they're there, and those types of things. And so I want to make sure, you know, we distinguish between, you know, really the bad actor and those who are trying to do it right. Darren, I believe Mayor Protim had a question real quick.
Sure. In fact, before I answer that question, I just wanted to clarify that, yeah, this ordinance was never drafted in such a way that it would stop a Verona. It just, this ordinance, nobody can draft an ordinance that's going to stop that type of behavior. So we do have the other tools, and we're just going to have to go into the, to our toolbag and get a different tool when that happens. But this is not designed for that, so I just.
With that being said, isn't that kind of frustrating, though? Is that not frustrating that, you know, we gotta, we gotta pass all this stuff because we gotta stop Verona, and then it's like, oh, well, actually, this doesn't really speak to mostly what's going on at Verona?
No, I think what it does, it establishes some ground rules, and it allows you to monitor, and it establishes ground rules that are made public to everybody, say, hey, here's the expectations, and here's what you're required to follow. And then if you're not, then, yeah, because we can, a lot of times, somebody's going to be issued a citation, and they may say, whoops, I don't want to let that happen again, because that just cut into my profits this much on my STR. So I think most actors are good actors, and even good actors are going to make mistakes, which is one of the things you talked about, didn't want to see somebody lose their permit because they slipped up once, or even twice. And so, you know, we can, we can talk about that in the next section. But to Councilmember Hernandez, your question, I think, I was just visiting with city manager, I mean, I think it would probably for sure be posted on the city's website, but it can also be posted on CVB's website.
Just to the point that was just made, I guess the impetus for that question was, I want to make it as easy as possible for people to have access to this information, so that way, if there is an issue, however big or small, it's really simple for them to find the information, contact information, rules, things like that on the city's website. So I'm sure y'all will come up with some way to get it out there really easily, but I just wanted to make.
And that brings up an additional point. I was visiting with Tracy about it last week, and with Lawrence as well. It's one of the things, once we get this approved, it's not like we're going to be able to start enforcing this ordinance immediately. We have to, one, establish a permitting process and establish a website. We have to do all those things and work with the fire for inspections and just figure out all that that's going to have to be done. So there's going to have to be a gap between the time an ordinance is adopted and the actual implementation, because that stuff needs to be ready to go, and it's just not yet until we get clarity on what we're going to be working around.
Yeah, so I'm just maybe jumping the gun a little bit, but just wanted to at least speak to those things. If we're going to approve any of this in here, if we're approving alternatives and saying, yeah, let's just put on the city's website, just so that you kind of know that the expectation is that that information is as easy to access as possible.
Darren, do you have clarity on D, or excuse me, C restrictions?
Yes, I believe so.
I had just one more question on C. In terms of the, the issue I brought up at the beginning of this, the turning off utilities for a unit that was in violation, do we have any means of codifying something like that for a repeat offender into this section? Or is that, I guess, again, I want to put as many teeth as possible in place for the bad actor situations, and it seems like that is a lever that we have, at least in some circumstances.
In some circumstances. Just some differentiating factors in the one that you referenced earlier. Similar ownership, but it's a commercial property not being used as a residential property. Some of the issues associated with getting power shut off to a primary residence is going to be more challenging at times. And even, even so, even with Verona now, and going through those processes, and still having hearings and things on that, that's a tool that even a judge could utilize, but one that's going to be reluctant to be utilized by a judge in that instance unless they absolutely have to. Now, also, if, depends on the extent, if there are fire hazards that are so extreme, that would be a reason to be, reason to be able to do it, where it's probably not even inhabitable. In this particular instance, like I said, the other reference property was a commercial property, and it's not a primary residence, so it was a lot easier in that case.
And to that point, wouldn't that lever be in a fire life safety code versus in this?
That is correct, yes. The fire marshal in that particular case went out, did a thorough investigation, and made the conclusions that that was the appropriate action.
Okay. So let's move to D, permit denial and revocation, which we've kind of gone into a little bit right there, which is, which is good.
So there's not really one with what I call a recommended alternative here. There's some cleanup I've already identified today that I need to do in this section, but again, the whole idea here is, you know, a permit can either be denied, that's going to be upon application. You didn't meet the requirements to receive an application, or you received an application and it's going to be revoked. And these are the terms, or the situations in which it could be denied or revoked. And as you can see, it's not in compliance with applicable zoning requirements. Then, any statement made in the application is incomplete, inaccurate, misleading, or false. We have this three or more substantiated violations of this article. I'm actually going to take out, into any applicable federal or state law, because I realize the indirect consequence of that could be the person's had two speeding tickets in Pearland, and don't want that being held against them for this particular process. So I had to do some rewording on there that hasn't been done yet. And then finally, number four, which is very important, is if, if an owner's operating this but not paying their hotel occupancy taxes under chapter 28 of our code of ordinances, then that would obviously be a reason for revoking the permit after, that would be after giving notice that they haven't paid, and then giving them the opportunity to cure that. There's an appeal process by which they can seek a hearing, and through, appeal the decision, go through an administrative process. There is a waiting period. An owner whose permits revoked may not reapply for a new permit for a period of 12 months. That's something that I know, when I was answering some questions, I think for Councilmember Orlando had some concerns about that, and that you wouldn't want somebody necessarily being barred for a year because they had a minor violation and had their permit revoked because of that. But that being said, I'll pass that back to council and receive any feedback you may have.
Any questions, comments on section D?
I did have one that I wanted to put in here, and that is, for the A4, I would want as part of this, whenever they're, with their permit is being considered, that, and maybe that should have been part of the application, but I, you know, it came up into this, if they indicate that they have been operating an STR prior to submitting the application, I would like for them to show that they have already satisfied all previous hot taxes, at least for the last 12-month period prior to being issued a permit. And it would just be a self-reporting thing, but if they indicate, I, this is an existing STR.
Okay.
We would just say, show us how many rentals you've had, how much you've made, and show us that you've paid your hot tax for the last year prior to being issued a permit.
That's interesting, because how many do we have that have registered and paid?
Three.
Right, so what are we going to do with the other 90?
Make them pay it.
I mean, they owe it, so they should pay it. So I think what you would be saying is, do you, if, if they come in and self-report, well, yes, I've been doing this for two years, and I haven't paid any, then until they are current, you're saying, don't issue a permit.
Correct, yes. But I wouldn't say go back two years, I'd say just the last 12 months.
Okay.
Remember Cam Car?
The question I had was, so all of these reasons for revoking is, I'm assuming they're not going to self-report on themselves, that they're not in compliance with zoning, so how does, how do they get notice, or whoever is responsible for adjudicating this? How are they, what's that notice?
The substantiated violations really are going to be of this article. So if, this is going to assume that they have a permit, and three or more substantiated violations, those are going to be where we've gone out and, and made calls to that property, because it may be, for instance, a police get a call and saying, hey, there's a lot of loud noise going on next door. They walk in, they look at the permit on the door, see that this is a, it's permitted, or three bedrooms, max, maximum occupancy of 10, but instead, what they see there are 25 people in the residence. And then, so that is technically a violation of the ordinance. Now, let's just say that they go there and see that, and then the, you know, the people leave, and it, and it ends at night. The question is, is do we want to hold that violation against the individual if they came into compliance, because the owner of the property didn't necessarily know, you know, he, let's say he followed his rules for posting, advertising, saying you can't use it for parties, maximum occupancy is this. Do you hold the owner responsible for that? I would say, if it's reported to their agent, and their agent fails to respond, as we said earlier, yeah, you probably do hold the owner responsible, because their agent ignored it. On the other hand, if the agent responds, goes over to the property and says, hey, uh-uh, maximum occupancy is 10, you got to leave, they leave, then they're probably not even going to be written up for a violation, unless we start to see that this becomes a trend with that property.
And then what if somebody's not permitted? Just, they're, they're being flagrant, and somebody out of the blue says, I don't know that you're supposed to be doing this. What does that look like, and how is that enforced?
Oh, it's illegal to operate a STR without a permit, so they would be issued a citation for that initially, yeah. And then they say, oh, I didn't know I had to have a permit. Well, okay, they'll come in, hey, they're fine, and they'll probably come in and apply for a permit.
Questions, comments on this section? All right. All right. Any other questions, comments on the draft? Because what Darren's going to do is, is take these comments, do some cleanup, it'll be back in front of us, second meeting in March. A little too much to turn around and have on the agenda for next week, so.
That's fine. I'll go ahead and work on that. I think I got received clear direction. What I'll do is I'll make these changes. I'll send the draft out to council. If you see something that, that you thought was different in the discussion night than what I have in the revised draft, then please reach out to me, and then we'll go from there.
Quick comment. I thought I heard you say something earlier about there would be a sign inside the premises. What's going to be contained on that sign?
This would be one, essentially, what I think with the, what the direction I got tonight is, when they obtain their permit, it would be actually a permit that has certain fields on there, occupancy and so forth, occupancy limit and all that stuff, where the fires, you know, that it has a fire extinguisher, and that will be posted on the entrance. It's basically going to be the permit.
Or something, maybe add something, say the occupants of this building are subject to a certain city ordinances and restrictions, can be found at a website, and that website on there, and they can't, you know, claim they didn't know.
That's, that's a good thing to put on the permit as well, yes, for those, for those people who are guests.
All right. Well, let's, let's move on to item number four. I do want to thank each one of you.
Excuse me, Mayor? It's Lawrenson Legal. Before we move on over there, I did hear Mayor Protim Hernandez talk about one specific issue, and I don't want to mistake everybody else's silence for concurrence or disagreement on that. And that is in regards to not allowing a permit to be issued until somebody we know has listed with Airbnb in the past as current, or comes current on their prior rentals with their hot taxes. So before we try to draft that, if we could see if there's a consensus from council on that particular issue.
I like the idea, but if the spirit of this is getting, getting everybody registered and on track going forward, we're going to be dealing with the other 90 that aren't. But I can see the point. I don't know. I see that as a huge administrative headache for staff right up front.
There were some business owners that said they were damaged.
I was going to say, I think it's self-reported. So that's, yeah. Self-reported, I mean, it's already the, it's already the law, is they should be paying it, so.
So we're saying, check a box if you've followed the law for the past 12 months.
Basically, yeah.
I can get there. Any, that's, that's two. Any other concurrence?
I'll support it.
Lawrence from Legal, is that enough?
I leave that to Darren. He's the guy who has to ultimately get it through. I think, I think we saw three, but there might have been four. He might see more head nods up there than I can from back here.
I did not hear any objection, so I did hear three people at least supporting that. If, if, if that council's in agreement, then that will be included in the next draft.
All right. We'll move on. Those members of the committee that are here tonight, John and others, thank you for your service continued. Hopefully, we'll get this finalized and cleaned up, or cleaned up and get back on the agenda here in a few weeks, and move this ball forward. Thank you, council, for allowing us to do that one section at a time. I think that kept everything on track, and helping with Darren and Lawrence to go back and put this document hopefully in its final form, and we can finally get it passed. Moving on, new business item number four. So you left off Mayor Protim. Would you present that, please?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R2022-32, so moved.
I have a motion and a second. We're into staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, council. This is another project as part of our approved capital improvement program, and another investment in the strengthening of our water system infrastructure. That is for the Bailey Road Water Treatment Plant. That's all described. And this particular action, after the design and everything that's got us to this day, is for the actual construction award. I will note that we had one bidder, but the pricing is such, and this contractor has been vetted and believe it's a good one, we do not believe it'd be in the city's financial interest to go and try to rebid it. But this contractor is checked out, and the amounts in this action also includes a budget amendment to make the allocation that to cover the additional amounts that are anticipated. But given this bidding environment, we do recommend your positive consideration. The next item for that is for the testing, assuming that we award the contract tonight.
All right. Questions, comments, concerns from council? Mayor Rollins?
No, we only had one bidder on this.
Yes, sir, that's what I said.
Any particular reason?
Roberts, we've, as part of the research, you want to talk about that a little bit?
Sure. As, as the market is going, there's a high demand for those contractors, as with the Northeast plant that is being constructed. This falls well in the suit of what LEM has done in the past. We did have multiple vendors come to the pre-bid meeting, but in the end, only one did bid. LEM is reputable, does very good work. They recently completed a project in Missouri City to expand their surface water plant.
Did the design on this?
Improtech, Hibbs and Todd.
Who was it?
No, Improtech, Hibbs and Todd, EHT.
Okay. Let me see. Okay.
Yeah, and it's come in below, how much below?
Well, the engineer's estimate.
It's 4% below the engineer's estimate.
And I, you know, staff saying, you know, especially given today's environment, rebidding may actually cause it to go up.
They're good.
Today's environment. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cam Car?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member...
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right. Moving on to item number five. Mr. Car, Kamkar, would you present that, please?
Consideration possible action resolution R2022-33, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report?
As reference, this is the materials testing that goes along with that for Terricon for the ongoing work at the plant.
Any questions, comments, concerns from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little? Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Motion passes 6 to 0 for R2022-33.
All right. Moving to item number six. Mr. Little, would you present it, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action resolution number R2022-52, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any staff report?
Yeah, just briefly, this is a follow-up to the council's discussion last week where you created the structure for a drainage bond advisory committee. This is the follow-up to that, which actually has the members populate that so it can get going. Various groups were contacted, as well as council member, individual appointees. I will note that there was a, as we have a council committee, and they got a recommendation for the council's appointment of the chair. And that recommendation is for Seth Thompson. And the only poll, if you will, would be the BDD4 representatives. They'll be giving us that when they meet next, and there's not a need for this to come back. We'll just slot those names and get them spun up to participate from there.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on that, that, that standing committee is myself, Mayor Protem and past Mayor Protem. And we discussed the two council selections as Member Kamkar and Member Carbone. And then as recommendations, and then we made a recommendation to, for Seth Thompson as the chair. I think the charter states that the, that the council would set the chair. So I wanted to do that, to have something on the table moving forward. I would certainly entertain any thoughts or comments on that. And then my second question real quick, Darren, I was unclear when we did the agenda meeting. Will we need to make an amendment to state that or are we good with it the way it was written into the AR?
So for which part?
For the council members?
Naming the council members and the chair, is that a, is that a?
We've got, that in the resolution, I thought. We had them in there.
I was, I was assuming we had to place an amendment on the table to do it. We filled in Exhibit A, but we, and we would be voting on Exhibit A. And I, only is why I say is it was mentioned in the agenda meeting that we may have to do.
There we go.
And Mayor, we added those.
Yeah, they've been added.
Before we published.
Been added. Okay. I just, I wanted to make sure, because when we, agenda meeting, we talked, we may need to do an amendment. So I want to make sure that we were doing this the correct way. So any questions, comments, concerns from council?
Mayor, I've got one or two. And first of all, thank you for working so quickly. The, the team had, what, a week and a half to put this all together? And, and the other entities all put their names in relatively swiftly. On the scope on this item on page four of eight, I just, I want to understand what that means a little bit. We can pull the memo up.
Just so we're on the same page while we're getting that, I mean, the, the structure was set up last time, so the names are the attachments. That's what's always before you right now.
I just want some color on the second bullet or dark bullet after the three.
Prioritize?
Yeah.
So what, what do you need on that? The prioritize potential future projects?
What does that bullet mean relative to this discussion? I guess the committee's working, we've got some tranches of costs that we're looking at. We have a budget that we kind of tentatively put together. And then this is kind of all the different things that this group needs to do. And I just, I'm trying to understand.
So I'll, I'll venture an educated guess, and Trent can correct me, but just as with others, if you have a prioritized list based upon some of those factors, they talk about those dependencies and so forth, and then you've got a, a line that would be the 90, and then another line that'd be on up as each of the tiers we talked about, so.
Does that, the only reason I'm asking is because at some point, this is going to leave the discussion of a body and it's going to get technical to a certain extent. And that seems like that discussion point is going to be veer very, very hard into the technical and then the limitations along with that.
Sure. So I think the, the intent here with this part of the, the charter for the committee is basically that as they prioritize future drainage projects, that we have to be cognizant, cognizant and recognize the Clear Creek project has to be completed for some things for us to move forward with. And that's not slated to be completed until 2029. So it's just making sure we're not prioritizing projects and trying to build something in, in 2025 that we really can't build until the Clear Creek project's completed.
I think I understand what you're saying relative to that. I might have changed the word prioritize to identify the projects that are affected by that, because the way I read that is prioritize the projects that we do with Harris County Flood Control as opposed to the projects that have lesser input. I'm, I'm, I know we're wordsmithing here.
Sure. I think it was to prioritize all the projects we have available to us, but we have to recognize that some of them just cannot be done at this point in time.
Because it does. It has prioritized those and then is with recognition of the, so it's prioritizing within that recognition. And I also read this as these are our partners, Harris County and BDD4, not just with the Clear Creek project, but also with their approvals and their thoughts and all of that in mind, especially when, when it talk about the different creeks. Clear Creek, Mary's Creek, Charles Creek and so forth, so.
And I just wanted to get some color, and then.
But I think having it in the public sphere, we've talked about that. That's what it.
Right, right. Yeah, and that's, and I'm good with that. The only items, and I'd like to offer two friendly amendments under the meetings on the next page. The, the meeting scope is fantastic. The timing is fantastic. We're trying to do a lot for a short amount of time. I'd like to add that we do at least one of those meetings in each sector of the city.
I, I apologize, Council Mayor. I just want to let you know that that document itself, which was approved at the prior meeting, is not on the, it's in your agenda packet, but it's not up, it's not part of the resolution that's being adopted. So we wouldn't be able to amend that document tonight. We'd have to put it on a future meeting. But if you would still like to indicate as much.
Yeah, I, I just want it to be, because we're going to have the new school, snack school, the new library, which is going to be apropos place, as well as the West Side Event Center. And as we want more citizen engagement.
I, you know, so I'll, I'll kind of lay out how the, you know, I've, I've spoken to staff and others about maybe how the committee would go about working. Obviously, committee itself needs to, you know, figure out when, when and where they're going to meet or how they're going to meet. I think initial would be in-person. Let's, let's talk through these.
Organizational meeting.
Organizational meeting. And then I could also see that they may have several meetings, you know, back to back to back. It could even be virtual. Very quickly, let's get on, let's go through some of the business that we want to do. And then next public meeting, let's have it somewhere other than here. And then in-person, we're meeting, we're having our discussions. It's open to the public. And then here, we're going to have some virtual meetings again and kind of do all that. And then once, you know, kind of all that's done in the committee recommendations here, I can see us in having open house type meetings.
Absolutely.
In, in different areas of the city.
That's why I'd like to take.
And I think that's beyond really what the, what the committee's scope is. It kind of gets into our scope. But then, kind of like Tech Dot and others do, we have these open houses to get input. So that's the way I've seen kind of how this works moving, moving forward. But that, the committee may, may say, "No, we want to have all of our meetings together and not virtual." So, I mean, kind of let the committee kind of have some of that, you know.
Mayor, I, I thank you for that clarity on that. I think we're aligned on that. I just, at some point, there's going to be, here's what we'd like to do. And we'd like to have everybody be able to drive within five minutes, 10 minutes of their own house and be able to come and see that this is what works for us and go from there. And it's just having more of that access. And then the only other item is, is near the top is the sunset date. Right now, the team is going to work with their preliminary report between, let's say tomorrow, for instance, just for the sake of discussion, June 1st, and then a final recommendation, August 3rd. And then for the sunset, maybe just compressing that down maybe to November, only because that runs into Thanksgiving, as well as that would be 90 days from the August 3rd final semittel. There may be some cleanup items. I hope there aren't. But that would be my only other item, would just be a cleanup on that. But that's all I got. I'm very happy with the, where we got to. I think it was very helpful and, and I'm glad that the, the committee voted, the council voted 7-0 to go down this route and very supportive of that.
Any other questions, comments on that? Darren, would, would that be something that we'd have to bring back? Scope?
Unfortunately, yes. And, and let me, just to provide an explanation as to why. If you'll notice, the, tonight's resolution is to appoint the drainage committee and adopt the charge regarding, I'm sorry, that was the one we recently did. I'm sorry.
Creating the Citizens Bond Program Advisory Committee and appointing members to the committee. That's the act.
Correct. That's the action that's been posted for Toma for the public. It doesn't address the fact that we would be amending that.
I suggest the committee meet and get going. They may come back with some other suggestions and you can tweak it again rather than keep.
Mayor, I withdraw. That's, it's not worth the brain damage, for sure.
No, but I, I think you hear this, but also know that if, if there's some leeway on the end, we'll, we'll figure that out. Okay, cool. Any other questions, comments on this? I do want to thank those who are willing to serve on this committee. I think it'll be great work, but it'll be work, so it'll be good to see it all done.
Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Little? Member Owens? Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Motion passes 6 to 0 for R2022-52.
All right. Member Owens, would you place number seven on the table, please?
Consideration possible action, second and final reading of ordinance number 1605-3, so moved.
Motion and a second. Staff report?
Thanks, sir. This is the second reading for budget amendment number three. And this, as well as a follow-up from the discussions last week on the alternate path for how we improve our drainage systems in the years to come. This is specifically for what the council referenced was a $650,000 allocation from fund balance that would fund preliminary engineering reviews. There was a endorsement of that, and, and this is the second reading to, to make that. We'll proceed after tonight. Nothing to add.
All right. Any questions, comments, concerns?
I just wanted to reiterate, Mayor, that I'm happy that we have this. I see this as our down payment moving forward with tackling drainage. And you've set up here multiple times that we're all committed to doing something. And so I think this is, is kind of solidifying that commitment. So I'm, I'm happy and thankful for staff putting this together and bringing us the alternative.
Yep, very good, very good. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Little? Motion carries 5 to 0 for second and final reading of ordinance number 1605-3.
All right. Moving to item number eight. Back to you, Mr. Orlando.
Consideration possible action, first reading of ordinance number 1605-4, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. Into staff report, and we do have four people to speak. Staff report?
People first. So this is another follow-up from last council discussion. And this is for a separate budget amendment that would move monies from fund balance into the general fund for expenditure authorization that would make available for police technology packages. That was discussed as a priority for council and, and have some recurring, but not large recurring costs. We also had discussed and want to note that the council did not formally mention or ask for in their motion the other piece of that that was discussed, and that's for these neighborhood safety grants. So if you do want to include that, you'd need to amend this tonight so that we can get that in the second reading and then develop the program and bring that back to you at a later date. Nothing to add.
All right. Questions, comments from council? Member Rowland?
Yeah, I was just wondering, why didn't we make those on, on one instead of coming in at two, adjustments on the budget?
Because the other one was teed up and had been, although the, the title's the same, the, the information that had been there was strictly for the PER. So a decision was made, we had to be specific about that and, and bring it back.
Well, and we've, and we've voted on the first reading last, last meeting. So, and, and we didn't have the other one until the last meeting to even discuss, so. What we're talking about now. So questions, comments?
Yes, I guess this is for Chief Spires. How will you go about determining where these 21 cameras are placed? I'm already getting emails from several citizens asking if we could put one in their neighborhood.
I, I think Chief Savage is working on that with our crime analyst, but the, the crime analyst has given us the best locations to put those. And I think we had a map up there last time also.
Yeah, I think there's, I think there's two things. We've got the one budget item with the 191. These are the city's cameras. We're going to move forward and deploy those. And then, and Darren, correct me, but we would need an amendment, a motion to amend to add the 250 for safety grants?
That is correct.
Right. And assuming that is done and passed, then the city will have to have some form of grant process, application, criteria, something to justify how we're, how we're doing that, right? So that would be another step. Not sure how long that would take, but there would be another step in that process.
Okay. We'll, we'll wait to discuss that later.
Chief Spires, on the technology piece, there was a discussion on software and I guess physical hardware of cameras. Can we pull up the memorandum that goes with this? Because I just would like to topically touch on some of that software and just what it does, if that works, and how it makes us more efficient, if that's all right with you. There it is. It's these six items here. I just, mostly the general public doesn't know. We use Microsoft Word or Excel or Office, but these are, I'm guessing, items that are used in your profession?
Yes, so Chief Savage, Chief Savage is going to address those.
Description-based camera that is going to record strictly the license plate and the vehicle, the specific vehicle descriptions. So we'll have, we'll be able to generate leads off of that data. The second, second item, the Vigilant Solution Software, that is the commercial data or ALPR reads throughout, throughout the nation. So there are private companies that go out if they have an interest in vehicles, say Repo Men, that sort of insurance companies, that sort of thing. And they are constantly just rolling around, scanning in the area, and we don't have access to that data. However, this will give us that on the back end. So again, provides more data about who is coming into our area. So to help us generate leads to investigate crimes.
You're not, you're not using this to give out parking tickets or traffic tickets or traffic.
No, no, nothing, nothing for that.
So almost at one more time, you're not using this for traffic enforcement?
That is correct. We are not using this for traffic enforcement. As a matter of fact, the flock cameras don't record biometric data. It's strictly ba, it's strictly vehicle-based.
Real quick, I was remiss. We do have the four citizens to, to speak. So Mayor Protem, would you ask them to join us?
Yes, sir, Mayor. And first, I wanted to say thank you all for your patience. I know these meetings are always a marathon, so appreciate your perseverance. First, Mayor, we have. First, Mayor, we have Gene Kason. You would please make your way to the podium, state your name and address for the purpose of the record, and we're going to get three minutes queued up for you. Thank you for being here.
I'm Gene Kason, 1610 Gable Park Court, Pearland, Texas 77581. And honestly, I didn't want to be the first one to speak, but I am, and thank you so much for listening. We are Lakes of Highland Glen, we are on two major corridors coming into Pearland. What the criminals do is come in from southeast Houston, they take the first ride off of Pearland Parkway into our neighborhood, they drive the main road to Old Alvin, they take Old Alvin to McHard and go right back up to Macawa. They spend several hours in our neighborhood at night, going through every vehicle, the unlocked ones, or anything with anything important inside, they'll break the windows. What we got from the police department on this was we need to lock our doors. So if a criminal's coming into our neighborhood, police department is alerted, they can immediately come out and try to arrest somebody that may have a warrant or has been suspected in other neighborhoods or other areas of Pearland. So that way, even if our doors are not locked, while they're perusing our neighborhood for hours at night, it gives the police department plenty of time to come and check them out. We've had two shootings in our neighborhood, we have had a suspected sexual assault person come into our neighborhood, we had a police chase through our neighborhood, blowing through stop signs, things like that. It all happens close to my street. We've had two police incidences close to my street lately. Frankly, I would like for us to be reading license plates of these people driving slow, casing the neighborhood as they go back out to Old Alvin and Macawa Road and go back up to Houston. So that's why we would like the flock camera. I don't care if you're speeding, go ahead and speed. I want to catch murderers, rapists, and thieves coming into my neighborhood. But because we are on the major roadways, I think it would be better to have some sort of support from the city, because inevitably, we are helping the police department gather this data and see if they're suspected in other incidences in other parts of Pearland as well. The more information they have, the better that they are able to catch these criminals that keep coming and coming and coming nonstop into our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And since you didn't want to go first, I can have you go last also. I'm just kidding.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mayor, we have Jibby John. If you would please make your way to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. And thank you also for being here with us this evening.
Hello, my name is Jibby John. I reside at 1409 Bent Lake Lane, Pearland, Texas 77581. I also serve as a board member for the Lakes of Highland Glen HOA as well. I did want to talk somewhat on the flock camera system. It was something that has, has been on our radar previously. First off, I do thank you for letting Gene go first. But again, this is something that's been on our mind, because we've had activity, whether it's been reported to police or not, it's, it's been going on. Going back to 2020, we've had instances where within our pool parking lot, park area, we've had outsiders coming in, sitting over there, doing drug activity. And we know this because we would get reports from other parents where they say, hey, we found drug needles in the parking lot. And this is close by to a park. So HOA took the step and we decided, okay, let's go ahead and upgrade our lighting. Put lighting throughout the parking lot, we put lighting in the parks, just to, you know, to help deter with that. Same time, around that same timeframe, we also received some feedback from Hidden Glen and Pearland Parkway. That area never had a street light put in when the builders designed Lakes of Highland Glen. That area has been always a common stop for Pearland PD whenever they're pulling off, pulling over a vehicle coming off of Pearland Parkway. As well as we've had residents say, hey, you know, when we're walking early in the morning or night, there's no, there's no lighting over there. And I personally have witnessed somebody dropping, pulling a car over there, putting it on blocks, taking the wheels off of it and taking off. And so that's, that's happened before, and so again, we took that step at that time. At this point, along with Stonebridge, I hope that there's a representative here from Stonebridge as well, we've been talking about, hey, we want to do something with the flock camera systems. We have been looking into it personally for ourselves. We know privacy is a concern, they have a lot, they have options for that for the residents of that community where you can do an opt-out. I don't know the details for that, but this is really focused on the bad actors that are coming into our community. Again, it is, we are right at the edge of the city. It's an easy in, easy out. You know, people come in from Beltway, or they come in from 35, easily come out. And again, it's, it's that focus we want to reduce, and especially, you know, as Gene had mentioned, just in 2022 alone, you know, we've had the break-ins, we had the police chase, and at Stonebridge, you know, you had the event over there where a police officer almost got hit by a vehicle. The trend's not going well for our side. So again, we want, I hope that you will take this into consideration and approve this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, Mayor, we have Nigel Brooks. And Nigel is speaking on behalf of an HOA, so let's put five minutes up there. Thank you for being here. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Nigel Brooks. I live at 2101 Fairfield Springs, Pearland, in the Stonebridge subdivision. I'm here to.
Mr. Brooks, if you would, go ahead and get closer to the mic there. I appreciate it, thank you.
I'm speaking in support of ordinance number 1605-4 relating to the appropriation of flock ALPR cameras and to appropriate an additional $250,000 to the community grant program. For a number of years, the communities of Stonebridge and Lakes of Highland Glen have been experiencing increased crime relating to burglaries of vehicles in the early morning hours. These crimes are committed by organized groups who come into the neighborhoods during the early morning hours, steal items from vehicles. Within the past month, our community was targeted by one of these groups, and Pearland Police Department responded, effecting two arrests. During the incident, a Pearland police officer was assaulted by vehicle. While many of our residents have installed video surveillance equipment, which has captured the activity, there has been no deterrent effect as the individuals committing the crimes shield their faces, and the night vision capabilities of the cameras are not sufficient to provide details such as license plate numbers. We've been talking to Lakes of Highland Glen, specifically Mr. John, about installing flock ALPRs at the entrances to both of our neighborhoods. We would only need two ALPRs, which would cover the Old Alvin entrance and the Pearland Parkway entrance, and it would also cover a road that goes from our neighborhood into the Lakes of Highland Glen neighborhood. I urge the council to approve this ordinance, and any support from the city would be welcome. Thank you.
Does that conclude your comments? Thank you very much. Last speaker, Mayor, is Benjamin Peck. And Benjamin is speaking on behalf of Shadow Grove HOA, so let's get the five minutes back up there. Please state your name and address for the record. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, my name's Benjamin Peck. I'm the president of the Shadow Grove HOA. I live at 3207 Vintage View Lane, Pearland, Texas 77584. The previous speakers all are on the eastern northern edge of Pearland. Shadow Grove is on the far western edge, and we're experiencing the same issues with people coming from outside the city of Pearland. We're right on 521, corner of 521 and 518. So like the Lakes of Highland Glen and Stonebridge, it's very easy access into our neighborhood. We're having a lot of burglaries, and I think the, the money that's, that's being approved in this first part, the $191,000 for all of the upgrades and software and the, and the block cameras around the city is a great start, but I would urge the council to also consider the community grant program so that we can help even more parts of the city. Pearland's a very large geographic area, and I think 21 cameras is a great start, but I think with the community grant program, we'd be able to have the HOAs and other communities assist in that process and get more cameras out there to, like the other speakers have said, the more points that we have of information to get that licensed data, the easier it's going to be to track down the bad actors that are coming into our neighborhoods and stealing and vandalizing and everything else they're doing. So like I said, we're very much in support of this ordinance and hope that the council will consider also approving the community grant program so that we can help, the city help the rest of the city. You know, because as the communities around the edge of the city, we're kind of the border, and if we can stop it when they're first coming in, hopefully they won't spread further into the city. I think pretty much everything that needs to be said has already been said, so with that, I'll just thank you for the time and urge you to consider this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, that concludes our comments from the public.
Very good, very well spoken by all citizens tonight, and certainly understand the situations you're in, and you are, every single one of these are on the, kind of the border or the edge and where people come in, in and out of our community. So with that, we'll turn it over to council, and I apologize for having to stop. I forgot about the citizens that wanted to speak on this, so we wanted to make sure we got your comments on the record upfront, so.
Mayor Carbone?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate staff lining out the, the original tech items and then also kind of being prepared for the grant program. I know there'll be some details to work out, but I think go ahead and allocating the 250 tonight, that way staff knows that, that there's money behind it. And then I look forward to working with the community to roll out more of these cameras. So with that, I'll make a motion to include the additional 250,000 expenses for the community grant program.
Second?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. This is a motion to amend to add the 250,000 for a community grant program for, I guess it'll be more specific, to a flock camera program to be determined later. Obviously, we'll have to determine how that's going to be done. So we have a motion to amend, and so we're into discussion on that motion. Any questions or comments on that motion?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I kind of would prefer, I've been thinking a lot about this, I think I would be more supportive of this if we were to separate them out, and I would definitely be in favor of starting a grant program and having that as the basis of us moving forward with these flock cameras. One of the things, though, is I would like to see some type of a matching program, at least from the HOAs, involved in this grant program, kind of know what some of the reporting requirements would be before moving forward with this. I think it would be a good starting point, like I said, to get some of those flock cameras out that are more neighborhood-specific. For the other pieces, though, I voted no last time because I wanted to have a better understanding of maybe some of the runway to implement some of the software. I know our Assistant Chief Savage has given us some overview, and I just don't know that it was an appropriate time for me personally to really feel intimately, I think, familiar with the different parameters of this software, kind of what it does, what the implications are. I've had a lot of residents reach out and express concern over kind of some of the privacy issues and things of that nature, where I think it would be very appropriate for neighborhoods if an HOA and neighbors wanted to get together and say, this is something that we want to protect our neighborhood. I 100% for that, but just kind of broadly, before I can support this, I would like to, I would prefer to vote on this separately, and I would like to see some type of a matching element of some percentage whatsoever, even if it's as little as 10% for the HOAs to run this grant program.
So I think on the grant program, that, all of that is to be determined. For example, there's a cost of, the upfront cost, and then there's the ongoing cost. Does the city bear ongoing cost? Is it on the HOA? Is it a 50/50 for the initial camera? Is it a 50, you know, 25/75? I think that has to be determined. What I don't want to do is hold up the first 190, waiting on that. So all we're doing is allocating the 250. Staff come back with that grant program. In the meanwhile, the 191 gets implemented, gone and on.
Yeah, and I guess for me, if we're lumping them together, though?
Well, we're not lumping them together, I mean, it.
On this motion, it's my understanding that we just made an amendment to add 250 on top of the 191.
To add it to the budget amendment.
So this is, this is kind of doing what you want? It's a separate action for the 250?
It's a separate action within the budget. We just made the, we're just making a motion to add the 250 into the budget amendment.
That's what this is.
Or the grant program, which is separate from the 191.
Right, so the 191 is that, are we saying that that's set and done? We don't vote on that again? Tonight, we're only making a motion then?
No, no, so budget amendment number one is what's before you. That includes the 191.
Correct.
And there's a discussion, it was talked about last time, so it's all legit, but for the 250, and that's been the motion that's there for additional 250 on to the 191.
You'll get a chance to look at the grant program and define it and chop away at it, fix it, work on it, but essentially what we're saying here is we're appropriating these dollars holistically for the budget, and then at a later time on the grant program, have that fleshed out. The 191, what the staff told us last week, last time.
Okay.
Already has a plan, they're ready to go, there's not an understanding that needs to be cleared up, they're ready to roll, we just have to appropriate.
And if I could, I think this is appropriate, because there's no sense that's working on our program if there's not going to be some money behind it. So that's why tonight you need to.
Right, yeah, and that's right. I just, I guess I was confused because I saw that this budget amendment included the 191, which I thought was a separate action entirely, but you're saying that that's already done?
No, it's not. We, so we had a lot of confusion at the last meeting, and the only thing we did at the last meeting was approve, go and buy these cameras. We did not appropriate the money.
Right.
The budget amendment is appropriating the 191 for the action that was taken two weeks ago.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, but if we're making an amendment then to this budget amendment, that would be including the 250, so.
We're adding to the budget amendment 250,000 for a community grant program.
Right, so then whenever we, we vote on that, and then we vote on the original motion as amended, we would be voting on the 191 and the 250, correct?
Correct.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, I would prefer to have separated these out into two sections, two separate amendments.
Just, just, and I don't want to be argumentative, but we vote on annual budget amendments that have 10 or 12 different things in the budget amendment all the time.
Sure, yeah, I understand that.
This is no different.
But I think we have the, we generally have the ability, sometimes if we wanted to, to extrapolate those.
Sure.
Yeah, so I just wanted to, I guess.
So you'd like to open the wallet twice to pull out the same amount of money as opposed to just open the wallet once?
I don't know there's advantage to having a seven different budget amendments for each single item either.
I think, well, I guess it's, it's, what I'm saying is going to cause me probably to vote two different ways tonight.
You can vote no on this amendment, and then you can decide on the whole package.
Member Owens?
Yeah, I'd just like to find out what the HOAs are doing out there, and I know that we had a problem for a while, but now we pay an off-duty police officer to be in the neighborhood on Friday night and Saturday night, and we pay that to our HOA out there, and we haven't had any problems out of it lately, you know? And it's a win, if somebody does something out there and the police pick them up, they get to fine, and the city gets part of it, but I think it costs us somewhere around 8,000 or 9,000 a year to have somebody out there on Friday night, Saturday night, and that was one, the two nights that we felt like, you know, that it was when most of the things were occurring. And so we really haven't had that much of a problem or anything since that time of HOA taking care of their own business.
Yeah, I think we, we all experienced crime in our neighborhood. I live in a gated community with 17 houses, and we've had somebody come in and go through all the cars in our neighborhood. We've had a break-in, we had a neighbor had a gun pulled on him, and this was all behind our gates with security cameras. So there's a lot of neighborhoods in Pearland, there's, we're approaching 140,000 people, and there's only going to be 21 cameras, so we're going to have to, people are just going to have to understand, we can't put cameras in every neighborhood and every entrance and exit, every neighborhood, it's not going to happen. You know, as we grow and maybe can allocate more to the budget, but people are just going to have to be patient. Unfortunately, crime is just part of the world we live in now, and the neighborhoods, like Councilman Owens just said, they're going to. And the neighborhoods, like Councilman Owens just said, they're going to have to us step up and take some measures too. The police can't do it all. There's only so many of them too. Unfortunately, like I said, that's the world we live in now.
Yeah, and I'm in, I like testing this grant program out. I guess the question I've got to council as a whole, what, I mean, I just want to be careful not opening Pandora's Box from the taxpayer funding HOAs and HOA improvements. And I know this is a public safety measure and I, and I get that. I just want to make sure it's not opening the door to other, other types of things that HOAs need to be handling on their, on their own. So I certainly understand that. I agree, 21 cameras is a start. Having more through entrances to neighborhoods and others is certainly going to help spread that, that around the, you know, around the city. I just want to make sure that we're keeping an eye on the ball, that we don't go and start getting into other things that HOAs normally take care of.
I guess I see the, the grant program is allowing the HOAs, if they, if they want to fund cameras, then an easy way to partner with the city for maybe the ongoing maintenance or licensing, but all that to be determined. I'm, I'm happy to, that we got the chance to set aside the 250 to, as staff would say, that now they have a funded mandate that they can move forward on versus some other stuff we ask you to do.
Any other questions, comments on the motion to amend? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we are calling for a vote on the, the motion to amend.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero to amend.
So now we have a, an amended motion on the table. Clay, did you have something?
Yes, Sir Mayor. So in this amended motion is the trial that the city would be initiating for those 21 flock cameras. There was a comment made, I think it deserves, we need to get on the same page, clarifying about how proactive or not those are and monitored or not, so if Chief or Savage can clarify that.
I think the good thing is this will give us an opportunity to see how they work before we roll out even more.
I just need to get clarified the capabilities of them. I think there's, so.
Yeah, I guess there was, there was, when I said something about real-time alerts. Just for clarification, we will receive hits on stolen cars or other, other wanted vehicles such as Amber Alerts or Camo Alerts that are issued by the DPS. Those are the real-time alerts that we would receive.
It's not, you know, this car doesn't live in the neighborhood, that kind of stuff, so we should understand that.
So we have an amended motion on the table.
Hey, quick comment. We've got $63,000 for the cost of 21 flock cameras for the 2022 budget amendment in 2023. And on the recurring cost of these cameras is $52,000 annually? So it's 83% of the original cost to maintain these cameras on an annual basis?
It's, yes, sir. It's a subscription-based service, and they're going to be, the ongoing price is, is 2,500 a year. Sir, also.
With the, with the software each year, you're going to have the ongoing cost?
No, sir. This is, it's, it's a web-based service, so the software, any maintenance of the cameras, anything to do with that is handled by the company. Since it's web-based, it doesn't, it doesn't bear on our IT system.
The Vigilance Solutions software is a subscription-based also?
Yes.
At $20,000 a year?
Yes.
And if you added, say, another 21 cameras, it's going to be 40,000 a year?
Yes, it's 2,500 per camera per year.
Where's that Pandora's Box?
That, that's what I mean. So how we structure the, the community involvement is, is going to be critical. Also, in that, you know, we have lots of areas of our city that don't have an HOA. But they, they have issues as well, and so how, how are they reached out to? How are they able to get into the grant program is, you know, to be determined as well. You know, there's other neighborhoods that, that, like I said, just, just want to make sure that, that people know about it versus just HOAs. Any other questions, comments on this? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we're now voting on the amended motion.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
No.
Member Little? Member Owens? Member Orlando?
Aye.
Motion carries five to one.
Okay, and so Darren, the second reading will be on the seventh next week?
Yes, the second reading will be on the next week's agenda.
All right, moving to item number nine. Where did I leave off? Mr. Carbone, would you?
Just to clarify, items nine, 10, and 11 are, are all imminent domain matters?
Oh, that's right. You were going to read these into the, into the record.
Yes, so if the council will bear with me, what I will do is I'll go ahead and read these three onto the record. They can be addressed with one vote and so, just bear with me as I read through these. So the first item will be consideration possible action resolution number R2022-42, resolution of the City Council of the City of Pearland, Texas, authorizing the power of eminent domain to acquire fee simple titles to certain property for the, for the road right-of-way being .1360 acres, 5,925 square feet parcel of land located in the HTMBRR Company Survey Abstract 304, Breaux County, Texas, being out of a portion of that certain called .4579 acre tract of land conveyed to Kaiten by deed executed December 31, 2010, in clerk's file number 2011001608 in the official records of Breaux County, Texas, for the construction maintenance of public road improvements on certain real property. And then consideration possible action resolution number R2022-41, resolution of the City Council of the City of Pearland, authorizing the power of eminent domain to acquire fee, fee title to certain property for road right-of-way being 0.0369 acres, 1,606 square feet parcel of land situated in the HTMBRR Company Survey Abstract 304, Breaux County, Texas, being out of and a portion of that certain called .5 acre tract conveyed to Christopher Lee Mosley by quitlained deed executed July 13, 1998, in clerk's file number 998028656 in the official records of Breaux County, Texas, and being out of and a portion of that certain tract of land ascribed to Carol Ann Jamison and Catherine Spencer Jamison as described in real property affidavit executed May 8, 2014, as recorded in file number 2014018256 in the official public records of Breaux County, Texas. And then also consideration and possible action resolution number 2022-40, resolution of the City Council of the City of Pearland, Texas, authorizing the power of eminent domain to acquire fee title to certain property or road right-of-way being .2560 acres, 11,152 square feet parcel of land situated in HTMBRR Company Survey Abstract 304, Breaux County, Texas, being out of and a portion of that certain called 11.570 acre tract conveyed to Anon Calet by deed executed August 2, 2018, in clerk's file number 2018040114 in the official records of Breaux County, Texas, for the construction maintenance of public road improvements on certain real property described herein.
So moved. All right, we have a motion and a second. Staff report?
Yes, I'll be brief. Mayor and council, as you are aware, when we get to this point where we're bringing properties for the act, this is for the acquisition of property through the process of eminent domain. This is associated with the Smith Ranch Road Project. That project is expected, and correct me if I'm wrong, Trent, but I, I believe this is expected to be, get kicked off this summer or sometime around June, I believe. And right now, there were 19 parcels to be acquired for this project, and we're down to three that need to be acquired by eminent domain, and this is the last step in that process. And again, this is a Tech dot project, and so a little bit of a nuance to this is that when offers are made, they have to be approved by Tech dot, and so if they're not approved by Tech dot, then we have to go ultimately to the, through the point of acquiring them by means of eminent domain.
All right. Any questions, comments, concerns from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we call for the vote, and this will be on all three of them.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Matters removed from consent, none. Other business, mayor and council issues for city council discussion, item number 12. Mayor Pro Tim, if you would present item 12.
Thank you, Mayor. This was an item that I believe Member Kamkar put forward regarding the surface water treatment plant, and so I will leave it at that.
Kamkar?
Yes, sir. Can we put the item on the agenda or just what the request was so everybody in the public can see it? I guess it'd be that little bottom part right there. The requested item was for consideration possible action update will require from the city engineer on the progress and costs on the construction of the surface water plant every meeting until substantial completion of the surface water plant. Then Member Owens was my, my second on this. My, we've had a series of meetings, probably since the beginning of January, and I want to say it's either the first or second one, there was discussions where we were starting to have a timing lag on construction, and we've sent a series of emails about what that might cost if it's fully staffed. I think it's 180 to 200,000 dollars a month. As most people know, when they go to the grocery store, they can feel the price of things moving. Well, that's no different in construction world. That is moving. As somebody who works in construction world, I'm, I'm feeling anywhere from 10 to 20% increases. It just kind of depends on the item or on labor. And right now, we're currently undertaking the largest project the city has ever done. I think it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 170 million plus or minus. I intimately think that at some point, the, the cost increase or that 20% that we are feeling will eventually come. I don't have any technical data on that. I just ask people to use common sense and ask, "What is it like going to the grocery store?" And with certain parts in China or on a boat somewhere, we are starting to make adjustments to that water plant. And I would just like, it's the most important project we are doing, to have a more consistent update for that until completion. I am open to other ideas beyond every meeting. But I, I think talking with Member Owens, everything in, in construction engineering world is changing right now. And the costs are not going the other way, going down, they're going up. I don't think we're giving away state secrets in that fact. It's just something that we're all experiencing. When we go to the pump, it just, you feel the pain. And I just think that there's a good possibility that we are just waiting for a cost increase to come our way, and I would like to be aware of it, of the structure that we have with the, the CMAR in place is essentially protecting us to that extent, but it is only if we preserve the status of the CMAR in the scope. There was an email, I want to say at the beginning of this month, that essentially said, "Items around cost increases or on delays will be reported via email," which sent gigantic red blaring alarms to me, that that's not probably an appropriate venue. And I would like to at least have that out in the clear light of day. I don't think, and just for the clarity of the record, I don't think anything the staff has done or the city has done has been negative or wrong in this respect. I just think we're in a black swan event where nobody prices in 20 or 30% contingency on a project of that scale. We just don't do that. And so that's kind of my, been my position on that.
Yeah, the concern, and I talked about this earlier with the CMAR, they don't hold anything to do with the design contract. So when you get in a guaranteed maximum price, and I don't know if this group that we're working with now is that, that way or not, but anyway, when you don't hold the design contract and you're asking for a guaranteed maximum price on it, if there's any kind of adjustment by the city, there's an opportunity, on the design, there's an opportunity for the CMAR to come back in and say, "Hey, I gave them guaranteed maximum price, but what you've done, you changed it on the design, and I can't give you guaranteed maximum price." That, it'd have to be an adjustment. And I don't know if, if your guy that, that person that you have doing CMAR would do that to you or whatever, but that's the way most of them do anyway, because they don't handle the design. The contract for the design is not with the construction manager at risk, it's with the city. And anytime, you know, and when you go out with it, you get a guaranteed maximum price. Now, if you come in, you make changes on the design, then, you know, he's got just, or she, or whoever it is, has got justification come in and increase the price of it by contract. So that's a concern that I had, you know, on a project of that size, you know, size of 170 million dollar project that, on the water plant out there, that if we come in and tweak the design based on everything that's going on today and not getting materials in or what have you, there's an opportunity, not saying that that individual that's doing it out there at CMAR would do it. But most of those people that I know that do construction manager at risk, they all have one or two attorneys on the payroll. I mean, any kind of a change, they can't guarantee the change if it's a change that the city's doing on their design. They can't, you know, they can't guarantee that price if y'all going to, you know, if the city's holding the contract for the design.
Number Owens, I'd like to ask a clarifying question. In the CMAR's contract, what is the amount of contingency that we have appropriated in that, that gigantic budget?
Approximately 2.5%.
What is that numerically, just for the record?
About 3.5 million dollars.
On a project of how big, I'm misrepresenting?
139 is the actual construction number. And, and maybe just to address a couple of things with, with the CMAR and the way we've done this is that we bring them in early while the design is still going, so they vet that design as we go through it. And then obviously with a project of this size, there may be small tweaks to that design as we go through it. But the only thing that they're able to get any additional funds on is that change to the work. They're not able to open up the guaranteed maximum price and change that at that point. The only, what changes are they able to price? And there's some limitations on how they can price that, how they can mark that up within the contract. And this contract functions is basically an open book. They've got to show us their bids on all the subcontractors. They've got to show us the, the numbers on anything they self-perform. Because the whole CMAR number is based on the cost of the work and a markup that was, that is in the CMAR contract. So we're very well protected.
Let me ask you a question, the contingency is 2.5% of the contract. What are the cost increases you guys are seeing in the last six months, generally speaking? What is that ranging? Is that in excess of 2.5%?
Probably in the 5 to 15%, depending on what it is. But another good protection we have in the CMAR contract is much of the equipment and much of the work has already been bought out or completed.
So just, just, I want to read the record here. So the contingency you have is 2.5, and the cost increases that you're kind of seeing is double that number all the way up to like?
Member Kamkar, though, I mean. But not necessarily applicable to this work.
No, I'm not saying, and here's the thing, we're not here having a discussion of contingency. What we're really having a discussion is, can we have a report every so often, just doing that? I'm open to not doing it every meeting. Member Owens beat on me instead of every meeting. I'm happy to do once every 30 days, just to have a briefing. I don't think we should have a discussion in depth about like, how's it going, how great it is, and is it moving water quite yet? Just where are we in the project? Last time I heard, we are 40% of the way through. So that's two-thirds still to go, and we still haven't got a cost increase yet. So I'm just asking for this body that we do a little more oversight in just until this goes, because this, there's two-thirds of the project not completed. And I do feel a cost increase is coming. I don't know when. I can't put my finger on it. But I just, contractors don't usually eat cost increases. They just don't. They pass it on to the end user, and the end user is us and the city and the residents, and eventually to roll into your water rates. So I would ask the body, and I'll make the amendment to this item. to this item, that we have a reporting once every 30 days.
We have a motion.
I think it's a good deal to have a report on it and let us know what kind of scope increases or price increases that we're getting on that.
Robert, I think he said he's open to other suggestions. Do you have any other options that maybe you would recommend? Is, I mean, you would, I'm assuming be the one, maybe you or Trent would be the ones doing this. So.
So fortunately for us, we're not the ones that have to actually do this. We get to sit up here and talk about it. But, you know, right now, we're reporting, I believe, every two months on the construction progress with a, with a Thursday packet memo that's pretty extensive. And so that's being produced every 60 days. If we see anything that pops up in between that, we'll obviously, you know, funnel that up to the city council as soon as we see it may impact any part of the project. But right now, we don't have any, you know, actual thing from a inflationary standpoint that's impacting the project.
Would you be open, Member Kamkar, to take in that memo every 60 days and just throwing it on consent?
No, I, I prefer a once every 30 days, and somebody come in here and come before us. I just, this is 100, the largest project we're ever doing. We're in an inflationary time. I remember we discussed wages last year, and the city's budget officer said we're not in an inflationary time. This is transitory. And guess what? It ended up being transitory. I don't think with 60% of this project still to go, it's already acknowledged to be 40 or months behind, that this is going to get better anytime soon. I would dislike us once every 30 days to have somebody give a report in the clear light of a meeting and just tell us how it's going. I don't, I feel like that threshold's really, really low and really, if everything's going to be fine, it'll be a great report. If it's not going to be fine, we'll know bad news sooner than later.
Yeah, I agree with you, Alex, that just give us an update of where we're at and what we're doing on it. Every 30 days, let us know, since it is the largest project that we've ever done. And on the freshwater plant. And I think, you know, if we could just do that, let the council, mayor and council know where we're at, and how things were going.
I'll go ahead and make that motion one more time. I don't know, we've heard a clear second. I'd like to make a motion.
Quick question. If you have an increase in the budgeted costs, you have to come before council to be approved anyway, correct?
If we get wind of that beforehand, we'd flag that and bring that and prep it up, and then you'd have to review all that ahead of time.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to go ahead and make that motion for a report once every 30 days. That's the motion.
You know, I don't, I don't think it would hurt the staff to come in and let council know what's going on in the project once every 30 days. It's not a big deal. You know, far as being able to put what information together, you track it on a daily basis on the computer anyway, I'm sure, on your activities, on your project management stuff, you track it on there.
Darren, could I, could I ask if we did just take the 60-day memos, could we put them on consent agenda, just, you know, out there? And then that way, we give us the opportunity to pull it if we wanted to discuss it as an alternative?
Technically, it's possible, yes.
I'm gonna, I'm not saying it's the appropriate thing. Let me just offer something up real quick. Because like, if we had a every 30 days, I don't know how much there's really to report on every 30 days, from 130 to the next 30, okay? And then when we do have something that is on the ground that's changing, our staff is very good about alerting us when there's an issue. So what I would recommend is we have the memo every 30, every 60 days. It's, it's a thorough memo of where we are in the project. And then we do meet quarterly for CIP, whether it's other types of CIPs or not. We start each one of those CIPs off with a briefing on the plant and where we are and how we're doing. And so it's, and obviously, if there's something in the report that you don't know about, or doesn't understand, or want to ask a question about, you know, each one of us have phones, each one of our staff members have a phone, so you can pick up and you can actually call and get your questions asked and answered. And then we can get a public briefing every quarter. In fact, we have a quarterly CIP coming up in March. I forget what date. So that could be the first one to start it off. We would have one here in three weeks. So.
How about in a public meeting once every 60 days? That's fine. I just, I would like a higher level of oversight than, than where we are.
I don't, I don't think it's any higher. You're still getting it.
When Mr. Ardura, and I don't want to be, I just want to say, when Mr. Ardura was here, he was sweating a little bit. And I think he realized that some of us knew what was going on. And I just want a certain level of accountability beyond a memo and an email that maybe somebody clicks open. That's, I just, one little level higher. If there's no issues, and Mr. Apperson's right, and we won't have an inflationary spike, and nothing's wrong, this will be a very quick item on the agenda. We move past it. Right? Lo and behold, if four months from now, there's a 12% increase in everything, I'd like to think that they would tell us earlier, sooner than later, because it would eventually, somebody has to sit up to the podium and tell us. I would like to think, I just, maybe I'm too not trusting. I don't know what that makes me. I would just like a little higher level of scrutiny. All I'm asking for, Mayor.
Did we? I didn't get a second.
Yeah. What do you use second? The motion for once?
Never heard, I never heard second.
All right. We'll try, we'll try this again.
I would be willing, if I was a compromise to meet you, I would be willing to just do the memo on the consent agenda. That would give us the opportunity to pull it if we have any questions. It would be there, but if not, it would be procedural. I think maybe 30 days is asking a little bit much, based off of the response we got.
With the update of what the mayor said. I'm just talking about. Every CIP have staff give us a quick update. So that's every 90 days, and every 60 days though on consent agenda.
I would be okay with that.
Hang on. We have a motion and a second. Every 30 days.
We're gonna do every 30 days.
That, that was every 30 days. And Woody seconded every 30 days. Okay. So before we go, anything else, I want to make sure I keep these in, moving forward. So we have a motion and a second. So an amending motion to have a podium report, I'll call it that way.
Sure, there you go.
Podium report, a live report on the, on the plant every 30 days. And that could even be like, second meeting of each month or something like that. It's not exactly 30 days, but we get it. So with that, is there any other questions, comments?
Well, I think that, that would be the original motion. So.
Well, yeah, well, yeah, you're right. That would be the original most.
So they, they could either withdraw that and amend it, or we could make an amendment now.
They made them, they made a motion a second, so we'll vote on it. So, Madam Secretary, what we're, it's not an amending motion, it's a motion to have an update every 30 days, live update every 30 days here in the chambers. So with that, we'll offer the vote.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
No.
Member Little? Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
No.
Member Carbone?
No.
Motion fails two to four.
All right. So you have a subsequent motion?
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we, every 60 days include the staff report and the consent agenda. And at the, the beginning of every quarterly CIP update, start with a staff presentation on the surface water plant. I'm gonna stick with what I got.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. So any questions or comments to that?
So I can just say that to Member Kamkar, because it will be on the consent agenda, you can pull it.
That puts it at the podium.
Correct. And you have the opportunity to?
I'm trying to be in a more friendly place in 2022. I'm just asking for more accountability, more directly and sooner.
You're getting that every 60 days.
I appreciate that, Mayor. I'm, I'm, I'm happy to go out there and pull things, but I just, I don't, we could have done that on the 30-day. I don't know why people voted against that. But for whatever reason, I accept that. We'll, we'll keep moving forward. I just, this, this water plant is going to go over. It's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. I just want us to have as much time out there as possible to be aware of it. So if, I will go with, I will be the second on Member Carbone's item, even though I would like a little more accountability, but fair enough, second.
So we have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Let me ask one question. One quick question, since we borrowed money from the state to do this, do we do a reporting to the state?
Councilman Owens, so then when we do our reimbursements, we submitted all our pay requests, and the reporting is required. And then at the end of the project, there is a final summary, make sure everything's all buttoned up.
So we do some kind of summary back to the state since we're borrowing the money from?
Because they need to review, review the pay request.
All right, thank you.
All right. Madam Secretary, we call for the vote.
Can I clarify the second, please? Because I believe Member Hernandez said the first.
I did second his motion, yes, ma'am.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little? Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero for the 60-day staff report on consent agenda and the quarterly CIP staff presentation on the surface water treatment.
All right, moving to new business item number 13. And before we place this on, I placed this on the agenda. And the only reason why is I simply think the members of the committee, as well as staff who prepared this, just deserve an up or down vote. If it's no, it's no. If it's yes, it's yes. One thing we told both the U B committee, well, we told the U B committee back at this time last year, is that we wanted them to go back and review, come back with recommendations, and we would then vote on 3230 when we came back. We've never voted on 3230 beyond that. So if the votes no, it's no. If it's yes, it's yes, and we move on. I'm not looking for a big debate tonight. I'm not looking for a big hoopla. Just, I want the committee, as well as our staff, who's put a lot of work into this, to have the opportunity to have a vote. So with that, I'll ask if anybody wants to put this on the table.
Yep. Mayor, I will make a motion to consider ceasing the 3230 plan for utility billing. Motion can, to consider the ceasing of the 3230 plan for utility billing, inherently a one bill alternative. So moved.
All right. We know our vote. And people out there will know the vote as well. So with that, we'll move to executive session under Texas Government Code, Section 551.087, Economic Development Negotiations, Section 551.072, Deliberations Regarding Real Property. With that, we'll move into exec session at 9:13.
We're good, Mayor.
All right. We're returned from executive session at 10:03 PM. New business items number 14 and 15. Darren, do you have a wording on that?
Yes, Mayor. We'll have two motions. Let me see. With respect to item number 14, recommend that the City Council approve addendum number two to development agreement with prospect number 1407 and amendment number two to related reimbursement agreement with the Pearland Economic Development Corporation.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Member Kamkar.
Aye.
Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Little.
Aye.
Member Owens.
Aye.
Member Orlando.
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero.
And if I could just clarify, that was actually, that motion that I made was related to 15, excuse me, no, that was economic development negotiations, I did get it right. Okay, so item number 15, real property. This recommend a motion authorizing or approval of a letter finance agreement with Lower Kirby Pearland Management District and a reimbursement agreement between the city and the Pearland Economic Development Corporation associated with Lower Kirby Master Drainage.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Member Kamkar.
Aye.
Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Little.
Aye.
Member Owens.
Aye.
Member Orlando.
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero.
All right. With that, we'll move to adjournment at 10:05.
That's just nice. They did a good job.